Like to call the Monday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Sonora City Council Meeting to order at five oh one P. M. There was no closed session, just for the public's benefit. A pledge of allegiance, please. Our esteemed city attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer.
Yep.
Councilmember Garaventa. He's absent. Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Here.
And councilmember Satch.
Here.
Okay, um, four of us are here so far. Councilmember Garaventa is absent. Okay, city clerks report on agenda posting.
The agenda was posted Friday the sixteenth at one thirty P. M.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so we have presentations, introductions of firefighter intern Mitchell Smith and Logan Fisher, and volunteer firefighter Brian Bach to the city of Sonora. Chief Amy New.
We turned on. Awesome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. Tonight, our introducing our firefighter interns Mitchell Smith, Logan Fisher, so you can get a face to a name here with a mask on them, and our volunteer firefighter Brian Bach. Just a little bit of background about our, our three members that we're adding to our department. Mitchell here, if you could step forward just a little bit. Mitchell is from Pleasanton, California. He's a college student that enjoys hunting, road tripping, and an occasional mosh pit at a rock concert. He has his own band, and he is the lead singer. He has a little over a year of firefighting experience and aspires to enjoy all the excitement and knowledge that a firefighting career has to offer. He is now starting his third month at the Sonora Fire Department through our firefighter internship program, and he cannot wait to see where it's going to take him, so we welcome him aboard. Guys gotta go. Go ahead. You're good. Okay, well, they're gonna have to run on a call, but they'll be back, so. So we'll go with Logan, who is off duty today and here for badge pinning, so this is Logan Fisher. Logan was born in Oakland, California, and raised in San Ramon, California. He went to high school at California High, where he also played baseball. He was recruited as a pitcher for multiple colleges. He graduated from the University of Nevada Reno in two thousand and nineteen with a bachelor's degree in public health. After college, he started to pursue a career in the fire service, first by completing his EMT certification, and then graduating the Columbia College Fire Academy in the fall of two thousand and twenty. His cousin is a firefighter in Berkeley, California, and he has been helping him to guide him through the process, so we're glad to have him aboard with the city of Sonora. So let me grab. Okay, so we'll have to do one swearing in for the time being. So Logan, if you can turn and face me and repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Logan Fisher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties as a firefighter.
The duties as a firefighter.
With the city of Sonora.
The city of Sonora.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Oh, we turned. Um, Mr. Mayor, if we could, if the, uh, when the, the engine company gets back, if we could do the rest of the presentation, I'd appreciate that.
Oh, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I will say, we have been waiting a solid year for Brian Bach to be introduced, so we are yet again waiting now that he's going out on a call. Because of COVID, it's taken us a year to be able to introduce him, so.
That's great. Our fire department is very busy, and we're very thankful to them. Okay, so next on presentations, receive a presentation from Stephen Qualls, Regional Public Affairs Program Manager of the California League of Cities.
Mr. Mayor, I, um, Mr. Mayor Rose, I don't know if you guys can see me on the screen. We've added additional, um, our city attorney this, um, this meeting, so I don't know if you can see me or not, um, from the public's purview. Um, but Stephen Qualls from the California League of Cities, um, has been, um, has asked to present a, a presentation to the city council to discuss the role of the League of Cities, um, and how the city can, um, help advocate, um, with the League of Cities. So I am going to be sharing my screen. Stephen, I see you there. If you want to do a brief introduction of yourself, and then I'll go ahead and share my screen, because I have your PowerPoint ready to go.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be very happy to. Um, again, I'm very happy for that young man. He's sworn in for your fire department. I know he's gonna have a great future. Um, so yes, my name is Stephen Qualls, and, um, I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager for the California Cities. I am a former city council member, the city of Houston, and I was on there for three years before, um, I was fortunate enough to be able to get hired on with the League of California Cities. Previous to that, I was on the planning commission for the three years also, so I have a little bit of idea of what your, uh, what your jobs and responsibilities are. So, um, Honorable Mayor and council members and city staff and the audience, members of the audience, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight. Um, if you could, uh, bring that, do you want me to do my screen?
Um, I will have to make you co-host, sir, but I have yours ready to go if you just want to tell me when to, when to, you know, skip through your, um.
Yeah, sure. Oh, oh, sorry. What did I just do?
Can you, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Stephen, can you see that okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much.
Just let me know when to scroll through.
Okay, would you mind, again, this is for the Sonora City Council? Um, so I'd like to share with you a few of the facts about the League of California Cities. We actually have a, a shorter name now. We're called Cal Cities. You may have seen emails. I'd like to share with you how we work together with our member cities to help protect local control. Our office, main offices is located in Sacramento, but the regional managers such as myself live within each of our divisions. Um, we have, our lobbyists are the ones who are in Sacramento, and they are the ones who end up working with the legislators, working, you know, working with my bills and on, you know, on different things that happen up there in Sacramento, which there isn't a lot going on now, because there are a lot of people in the building. And then our analysts are people, are people who go through the, over this year, almost twenty-five hundred bills, then looking for bills that might have some kind of effect on cities directly or indirectly, either adversely or positively. Uh, we have seven policy committees, and you can see them up there. Each division is allowed to have two representatives on each of those policy committees. It's very important that we have those policy committees fully staffed, so that we have a voice, you know, the old saying, if you're not, you know, at the table, you're on the menu, well, that's exactly what we would be. And so I try to keep our policy committee staff. I do have a couple of openings currently. We had a couple resignations, and if there's any of these policy committees that you think you'd be interested in sitting on, please let me know. If there's not an opening this year, then we may have to, when we make reappointments in, in November, when our new president is, um, is elected, um, then I'll have, I'll put you down as being interested. And if one of those great committees, or if you send me a couple, if you're interested in a couple of houses, an opening, I'd be more willing to contact you. If you're so interested, we'd love to, um, place you on that, that committee. We have five league diversity caucuses, Women's Caucus, Latino Caucus, African American Caucus, Asian Pacific Islander Caucus, and LGBT Caucus. We also have ten professional departments, one of them including the Mayor's and Council Members Department, which is very instrumental in keeping the Mayor's and Council Members engaged in the activities in Sacramento. Next slide, please. So the league has a, uh, general counsel and another, another couple of, uh, employees who work with advocacy for our cities. Um, when cities are either sued or being sued, or have some kind of legal fight, battle that they have to engage in, uh, we lead, we write briefs for them, we write letters for them, uh, we don't actually testify or anything like that, but we are out there, and this is one of, another one of the many, uh, benefits of the membership. Uh, ballot advocacy, um, through our PAC, City PAC, we have run a number of ballot measures, and all of them have actually been very, very, um, well received. Uh, first one back in two thousand and four was Proposition One A, and I know it passed by well over seventy percent, and that was to keep the state from stealing our property taxes, you know. We are, have always been the low-lying fruit out there, and they would always come after us and take our property tax. Well, this, Prop One A constitutionally protected those funds. They were allowed, they are allowed to borrow them, and they did so a couple of years ago when they had a large budget deficit, but they have to pay it back within three years, and they have to pay back with interest, which they did. And then two thousand and ten, we did Prop Twenty-two, and that was to constitutionally protect our fuel taxes, because the government, the state was doing the same thing. Whenever they have a shortfall in their revenues, they would come after us. Our divisions, as I mentioned, we, uh, have sixteen different divisions. Um, our division, yeah, is six counties and twenty-five cities. We have Twomey, Calaveras, San Joaquin, St. Louis, San Luis Obispo, and half of Madera County. There's like two incorporated cities in Madera. The city of Chaucho is in our division. We have quarterly meetings. I know it's hard for you to come down off the mountain when we meet in person, but we have been having them virtually, and our next one will be in June, and it'll be virtual, and I'd love to have you join us. Usually we have a speaker, and then we, or something like that. Um, and then our advocacy efforts is where you guys come and play, and I'll cover that later on. We also have the California Civic Leader Institute, and what this is, it's a training for local officials, officials who are interested in running for the legislature. Uh, currently, we have a hundred and twenty-seven alumni and twenty-nine that were serving in the legislature this year, this last two thousand and twenty-one. And then we have our league partners, and these are businesses that supply goods and services to our cities and care very much about the city welfare, and they're a very integral part of our organization. At our annual conference, which is gonna be in September here, we have a, an expo where they will be there to display their wares. So tentatively, the, um, annual conference this year is gonna be in person, but obviously it's gonna depend upon the numbers. Um, next slide, please. So your role is advocate. Next slide, please. So you really are the cornerstone of our strength. You are the ones who the legislators want to hear from and respect your opinions. Um, I can't tell you how, how much it helps when our lobbyist goes into a legislator's office and says, hey, we'd like to talk to you about, let's see, AB twelve thirty-four, and the legislator's like, I've never heard that, because a lot of times legislators only really have the information, they're concerned with their own bills. And so when we can have, when I send out the urgent, uh, request for action, and I ask you to send a letter, or to make a call, or text your legislator, um, then when our lobbyist walks into their office, he's there, able to say, oh, yeah, you know, the mayor or the council member, say, Sonora wrote me about that, and we talked about it, and you know, so it's on their radar. So it really helps to have you in there and have you guys advocating for us and communicate with your legislator on the, um, bills when I send out those action alerts. Next slide, please. So we have a number of different ways to help you become an advocate. Uh, we have our newsletters, um, and then on our website, there's a, a location called Bill Search, and if you want to know any information about a bill, it doesn't have to be, every bill is up through this introduced by the legislature, and it'll have a short analysis of the bill, and if we have a position on the bill, it will give you our position, and if we've done an action alert, it'll also supply you with a sample letter, and then I will be sending out some, um, some talking points. California City Finance is a, um, a sister organization of ours, very, very, um, well put together. It really helps you to understand things, such as, you know, the two, Prop Two Eighteen requirements and things like that. It's so very, it's very handy if you have any questions, and the gentleman, Michael Coleman, who runs it, is very good at answering a question right now. And then, of course, we have the law book, and then our Action Center. Uh, we have a Facebook page, and we're also live like everyone else on Twitter. Next page, please. So in two thousand and twenty, um, this was the agenda. This is some of the, uh, courses that were on there, and we had, we, uh, we ended up having it to, to it virtually. It's, it was in June of last year, but you can see some, these are some of the topics that, uh, we covered during this conference. Um, I can't really tell you, stress you how valuable it is for you to attend these. Uh, this year's will be virtually, so you can, you can, it might be much easier for you to attend it, but I know myself as a council member, um, I enjoyed how, not only enjoyed the information I got, but I'd like to hopefully have two or three people there, because we have concurrent sessions, and there's always something that you wanted to, uh, you'd like to see, but there'd be, there's something else going on, and then we can, uh, provide you with the written materials after the, um, the conference is over. So as you can see, there's some stuff that were, you know, pretty important last year, and probably still are this year. Cybersecurity, the homelessness, uh, effective city council, and city manager communication, and then the new, uh, reality of the bi district elections. Um, I don't know if you're, uh, familiar, but down here in San Luis Obispo County, every school district, special district, city council, every, were served with a letter warning them that they might be in violation of the California Voters Rights Act. The difference between the California Voters Rights Act and the federal voters' rights is that under the CDRA, plaintiffs are allowed to recoup all of their, um, legal costs. And, uh, so far, we just had a decision recently, but nobody has ever won, like, CDRA case when they've been sued, so that is something that's been going on up and down the state. Uh, next slide, please. So please get to know me, um, you know, I, I will be coming up there when things open up, and I'd love to have lunch with you or something like that. Um, I used to come up once a month for the, uh, GAC meetings at the Chamber of Commerce, and of course, then we had to, to close those downs, but, um, you know, it's my job to make sure that you have the alerts and you have the information. You know, I will give you talking points, so you'll actually sound like you know what you're talking about, when you're talking to your legislator. Um, I will explain to you some of the dynamics going on with the legislation up in Sacramento. You know, we can't always get what we want, but we can get a lot of amendments and other things to help the, the bills be a little less harmful, a little more palatable. Um, and then, they say, we help you with the letters, and then we also have training for your city staff, not only legislative process, but other things also. Next page, please. So, so your role really is to build your relationships. You probably already have these relationships, but it's very important that you have the good relationship with your legislator and the district staff, of course, your local media, I'm sure you're already there, and then individuals and organizations in your area, so you could be a good advocate for your city. Um, and then that's one of the good things about the in-person conferences, is you can, uh, network with the other city, county, and regional officials, and it's really a good way to get to know and share, you know, war stories, or hopefully success stories with them, as you've likely faced the same concerns. Next slide, please. So when I issue an alert, um, I get a lot of grief about putting urgent on there. It's kind of a joke, and you've ever been to our city, our division meetings, but that really means, please, if you don't look at anything else, please look at this, this email, because that means that there's something in there that's important for your city and for the cities of California. It's usually asking you to send a letter and to make phone calls to your legislators, and, um, to also maybe to work with me, to organize meetings with your legislators, or maybe do press conferences and things like that, uh, to be able to, um, protect local control for your city and for your citizens. Next slide, please. We have virtual webinars now, obviously with the COVID, and they are free to our member cities, some of them are very educational. We're also having roundtables now that are online, is everything from Parks and Recs to, you know, city managers and, uh, council members. Um, here's some of the, uh, the agenda for this year. We had the new marriage council members virtual in, in January. The city managers conference was, all of these were virtual, and then, um, and then I said the one coming up in June, uh, in May, Legislative Action Day, we normally go to Sacramento and meet with our legislators in person. Obviously, now we're gonna have to be setting up some kind of virtual environment, and I've not even begun to start doing that yet, so hopefully you can join us in that, when we meet with, um, a semi-member, Bigelow or Senator Borges, and then the, um, annual conference, which is in October, which is gonna be in Sacramento, which should be, hopefully make it easier for some of you to be able to attend. Next slide, please. Um, so this is something that's really dear, near and dear to my heart, so, um, what, my last year on the council, I was actually the vice president of our division, and, um, so as a, I was able to, uh, attend the league leaders meeting. League leaders is, is in November, and it's where we set the goals for the league for the coming year, and the goals of what are we gonna focus on? And so, um, what we did was we, um, got, got to separate into different groups, put up butcher paper, and we brainstormed on what the topics we see that are gonna be affecting or, um, facing our cities and the state in the coming year. And then we narrowed them down to three or four, then we all go back to the room, and we used to do the black dots, but now we're doing a little high-tech digital counter thing, and we set the goals, and this is a goal for our lobbyists and for our policymakers to follow the following year. So this is done by not only the thirty-two members from the division, but also the, the chairs of the, uh, different policy committees and the departments I mentioned to you, and they're all, almost all elected officials or city staff in some way, shape, or form. So this really, really shows me, and I hope it shows you also, the league really is a bottoms-up organization. We do set the goals that the league can, uh, set for them to, uh, try to achieve in the coming year, so, um, it's something that I, I was really glad to be able to see as a, as a vice president of our division, unfortunately, or fortunately, I got this job, and I was not able to stay on the council to be able to serve as president of our division. Next slide, please. So these are strategic goals that we put together the last year in November, um, and obviously, it was very timely, the secure state federal funding for local COVID, um, nineteen, a response. We were very, I hope that you're aware of the money we were able to get from the state and the CARES Act funding, and then we worked very hard with our national organization, National League of Cities, to get the federal funding that was also made available to our cities. Um, so, so to help secure funding for affordable housing and resources, help those who may be or are, are currently are facing possible homelessness, but still preserving our local decision-making. Improve the state local coordination when planning to help strengthen communities after, after disasters and for disaster preparedness, and then protect and modernize our, our critical infrastructure. Probably nobody knows more than your city up there, being, um, established when it was, that, you know, the, uh, infrastructure is falling apart, and we need to make sure that we can update this, and that helps, the state helps us to do so. Next slide, please. So in wrapping it up, I'd just like to encourage you to please, if not all of you, but if maybe one or two of you can attend our division meetings, I think you'll find, find it very valuable, valuable. Um, in the virtual environment, you can't really, you know, network or commiserate with your other council members and city staff, but when we do start meeting again, which hopefully will be in September, uh, please try to come down the mountain. We know we haven't early, they start at six, she'll be out there by seven, seven thirty, and it's just a really good opportunity, I think, and then participate in our education opportunities, um, as part of your league membership. Um, some of the, like I said, the webinars are free, but even the conferences are not that prohibitively expensive, and it's just a fantastic opportunity for you to learn what's going on and to become a better and more educated council member. I used to attend everything I could possibly attend when, um, when I was on the council. Then please stay engaged. Um, as I mentioned, the letters and the communication with your legislators, um, really helps us in our fight to try to protect local government control when it comes to land use and protect our funding sources also. Next slide, please. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any member of the council have a question? Oh, councilmember Satch?
Stephen, I, I, um, didn't write down the date of the annual conference in October. Do you know what that, do you know that off the top of your head?
Um, no, uh, Mary Rose, could you back up, please?
Yeah, it's, um, generally, I'll have to look that up, but.
I've got it. I've got, let me, let me, I've got my PowerPoint down here.
It was September, Stephen, but generally it's October, correct?
I know, it goes back and forth, so it is.
October. It was October.
It's, it's September this year.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that we send out all that information, and we'll make sure that those are budgeted for council members to attend as well.
Okay, yeah.
September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty.
You know, I'm sorry, this, this is last year, and that was in October last year, yeah, it is, thank you very much. I did not update my slide, and I'm gonna have to do so. I got the, but yeah, so thank you very much for your question.
Any other, oh.
I just wanted to comment, thank you, Stephen, and it's good to see you again, but there is a mayor and council members roundtable on Wednesday at noon, and it's about, um, disaster preparedness and also community response from all the different, uh, participating council members and mayors.
Thank you very much for bringing that up.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say on behalf of staff, you know, the league coming in as the new city administrator has been very helpful to me in getting to know Stephen and understanding legislation and, um, getting to know the different city administrators and city managers out there. We have been participating, you know, um, the webinars actually have been extremely helpful for our little city, because we are able to have more, um, employees participate in educational opportunities and in academies and conferences, so we were able to have planning commissioners attend the planning commissioner academy, um, we were to have multiple employees attend the annual conference, so we just thank, um, the League of Cities for expanding it to webinar-based, because that really does help from a little city perspective like us to, to be able to participate. So thank you, Stephen, I know you and I have been in pretty much constant contact on different things, so thanks again, and we really appreciate it, and I know, um, we do have some staff questions, if the mayor would allow us to entertain that as well.
I, I was thinking about it. Go ahead.
If you want to address something, Rochelle, I know Rochelle Kellogg from the Community Development Department, I know the burning question about fire safe regulations which affects the city of Sonora wants to address you, Stephen, on that.
Hi, Stephen, um, as you know, because we've reached out to you to help us facilitate, um, somebody from the league to assist us, and we're working with Justin, um, we just really hope that the league will get behind and work with us, um, especially, especially as cities on the forty-nine corridor and other areas of the state that would be impacted by the fire regulations as they start going forward. Um, I know that they're going with the draft that they had in March, and there is some concerns on how they will affect the city and our future development of our housing stock that's so important for our city and actually for the state. Um, so I'm hoping that the league will, um, support us with that, will help us with some of the analysis that needs to be done, because we have reached out to ask for that help. And just keep in mind, as you guys are working on stuff, uh, regulation of housing and other things, don't forget us little cities and, and maybe reach out when you can to get some of our input, because one size does not fit all. Okay?
And, and I was gonna mention you, actually. Um, thank you very much for reaching out to us for that, and I'm glad you were able to get to Jason. No, I'm gonna keep that in the front row, and it's not just the small cities, okay? There's a number of cities that, where I was in, um, we, we like to camp a lot, I was over in the Santa Cruz area, and their roads, they have the same problem, you know, it's gonna kill development in areas like that. And so, yes, we're gonna keep it top, and I'm gonna, please, keep bugging Jason, and anything, any ideas or information that you have that you think can help him in his battle with the legislature, because it's not legislature, it's, uh, Foresty Board, but, you know, anything you think that can help us, I, I, we, we can really appreciate. I want to thank you very much for your help and your input to, uh, Jason and the league.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to reiterate, um, I've been working with Rochelle on those fire safe regulations, and it's definitely not a one-size-fits-all, um, and I don't think it's the, just the smaller cities as you're, as you're stating. Uh, I think it's any of the older cities that aren't, weren't developed newly. Uh, we don't have the existing road and infrastructure to support, um, the regulations that they're trying to pass, and fire safety is definitely my number-one concern for the city, but at the same time, um, we have to protect the development of our, our housing projects and, um, support the ordinances in the city. So I definitely have some ideas that I would like to run by you guys that might help on alternatives for older cities that don't have the larger streets that could still, um, function during evacuations and disaster preparedness. Thank you.
And please, please feel free to, uh, reach out to me and Jason at the same time, or if you really prize, just send it to me, and then I'll make sure that Jason is, uh, is involved, because we need all the, for those, that's what helps us, you are, have, you know, the, the boots on the ground are the ones that help us understand that, that kind of stuff, and hopefully to help us make, you know, the Foresty, the board understand also, so please, I'd love to work together. She can give you my, my email address, and, um, anything we can do to help, obviously we'd do so.
Thank you.
Okay, and that appears to be all the questions, so just for the public's benefit, if you tuned in late, that is Stephen Qualls, he's the Regional Public Affairs Program Manager for the California League of Cities. Stephen, thank you very much. Stephen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you having me there.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment on non-agenda items. This is for anything not on the agenda. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation. Again, this is for non-agenda items. I see two hands up.
Yes, sir. I will be calling out your public comment. Your first public comment is from BZ Smith.
Okay, go ahead, BZ.
Here I go. Hello there, guys. It's nice to see you. Let me just start by saying at this beautiful springtime, when we all stand on the land that was once the everyday home of the Ptolemy Meowth people, I just would like to comment on how lucky they must have been to have lived here when this land was so beautifully abundant and rich and pristine. So I just wanted to share that with you. I have a little vignette I would like to share with you. I hear a lot of people talk about wanting to keep Sonora the way it used to be. And I certainly have sentiment that follows in that direction. So I thought I'd share with you a little segment of my first visit to Sonora. An O to Sonora, summer nineteen seventy-one. I remember that first time I visited this little hamlet. I stayed in a cabin way up high in Cedar Ridge with clear, bright blue skies in the day and a brilliant sparkling display of stars at night. I remember my first day walking down Washington Street. We popped into the Sprouse Ritz and got a bag of popcorn and looked in all the bins at the myriad of curiosity. I saw that bicycle that had no lock on it. I was amazed, being from Los Angeles and all. I saw people stop to talk to each other on the corners. Surely, that never happened in L.A. People meeting friends and neighbors on the corner. I'm a people watcher, memorizing faces, ladies dressed up for luncheons, men in overalls at Mundorf's Hardware picking through the big nail bins, children running on about their way up to the sluice box for ice cream. I watched them all. Later, we went into the Save Bar. You know the one. Our family calls it Lower Save, but back then it was the only save. We, as we cruised the aisles looking for a jug of hearty burgundy ingredients to make vegetarian lasagna, we were hippies after all. We walked by the bakery that used to be in the corner of the store. From what I could see, that was the only bakery in town on that summer's day in nineteen seventy-one. Then I saw faces, faces that I had already seen on the corner of Washington Street in Sprouts and Mundorf's. Now those same faces were in the market. I was dumbfounded, baffled. I turned to my brother's wife, my host on that first visit, and cried out, we just saw them in another store. That never happens in L.A. She laughed at my amazement. Welcome to Sonora, she replied. Thank you, my friends.
Mr. Mayor, next public speaker. The Chamber of Commerce, probably Katie Dunn.
Okay, go ahead, Katie.
Hello there. Yes, it is Katie Dunn and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. What a treat it is to actually follow BZ Smith's story, and I can totally relate to everything that she said. It was amazing. I just have a few things that I want to share with you this evening. One is, I want to thank you all for approving our Coppel Park Music Series for twenty twenty-one. You know, we were dark last year, so we're so excited. And you're gonna start seeing some marketing materials coming out very soon. So thank you very much. The, our second Saturday actually is coming back May eighth. And if BZ Smith is, she's still on the call. BZ was the one who actually started Second Saturday many years ago. And it's still going strong, but it's coming back May eighth. Obviously, we're gonna be following current COVID guidelines, whatever those may be, on May eighth. And then lastly, our April virtual mixer is tomorrow night. And it's hosted by CAD Radio, our community radio station for downtown Sonora. And we sent you a special invite and it should have hit your inbox around five o'clock tonight. So it could be our last virtual mixer. We do have, our main mixer is live. It's at the Chester and Push Horse Rescue. But we'll be able to offer both virtual and live mixers depending on people's comfort levels. So anyway, that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank, thank you, Katie.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, I do not see any additional public comment.
Okay, so it appears that our firefighters have came back in. So I will ask Chief Amy New to come back and we will finish our presentations.
Yes, thank you very much. False alarm. That was, that's good. So I had introduced Mitchell to you. We finished with Logan, and now I'd like to introduce Brian Bach to you. Brian is from Fremont, California, where he grew up being involved with the Boy Scouts, competitive sports, and probably a whole handful of things. He's a genius. While in middle school, Brian and his older brother Joshua were not known for taking the easy way out for anything. They worked for their uncle's construction company doing mainly demolition work. And then in high school, they became their own entrepreneurs, starting a business of their own, a handyman business to support themselves through their high school and college careers. Brian completed his firefighter one academy at Chabot College and a work experience program with the Oakland Fire Department. Brian is working on continuing his formal education to complete his paramedic school by the end of next year while volunteering at, as he puts it, the great Sonora City Fire Department, which we definitely love to have him with us. Brian would like to thank everyone who contributed and continues to contribute to help him along his career path. He would like to give a special thanks to his mother. She did not help him when he fell down, but mentored him on how to help himself and get up and led by example. So Brian has been with us for a little over a year, right? When COVID hit, so we haven't been able to introduce him into his swearing-in and badge ceremony. So we're really honored to have him. Just one quick note is Brian also works outside employment in the Bay Area on an ambulance company and has come in at two o'clock in the morning after shift to help us when we need staffing. So we're very lucky to have him. All of our firefighters, we're very lucky to have. So with that said, I'm gonna have you two turn and face me, if you could, and raise your right hand. I state your name.
Mitchell Smith.
Brian Bach.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies
against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion.
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge.
the duties as a firefighter
the duties as a firefighter.
with the city of Sonora
with the city of Sonora.
which I'm about to enter.
which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Sure, I got the right ones here. Oh, I'm shorter than. Just one other thing, we've been really lucky the past several months on hiring additional interns and volunteer firefighters. So we're almost to full capacity, which is outstanding. The programs that we have in this county are absolutely phenomenal for the firefighters and the fire service, starting with the CTE programs at the high school, the college programs that they have, internships. And when we are, we are trying to work with the college to provide a county-wide internship. So the three gentlemen that you got to meet tonight are just part of our workforce that we have here in Sonora. We're really proud to have them, and I'll be introducing some more at the next council meeting. So thank you and welcome, you guys.
Thank you. I'm glad they could make it back. Okay, consent calendar. Items on a consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or members of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Would any members of the council like to remove anything separately? Okay. And then I guess I will ask for public comment on the consent calendar.
If you have any public comment for the consent calendar, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you are on a phone line. And at this time, Mr. Mayor, I don't see any hands raised from public comment.
Okay. Okay, so I'll bring the consent calendar back to the council.
I approve. Second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Pretend Plummer and a second by Councilmember Garaventa. For a roll call, or, yeah, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Such?
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero. Onto new business. Okay, so item number six, I'll read them off and then I'll ask a couple of questions real quick. Item number six under new business, consideration of the mayor's recommendation to appoint Bess Levine to serve as a city of Sonora Planning Commissioner for a one-year term expiring on July first, twenty twenty-two. Consideration of the mayor's recommendation to appoint James Grinnell to serve as a city of Sonora Planning Commissioner for a four-year term expiring on July first, twenty twenty-five. And then consideration of the mayor's recommendation to appoint Stephen Opie to serve as a city of Sonora Planning Commissioner for a four-year term expiring on July first, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna have your Community Development Director Rochelle Kellogg introduce these applicants to the city council.
Thank you. So annually, we always have either one or two appointments of the planning commissioner, for the planning commission. This year, however, we have an additional, because we did have Ron Jensen resign from the planning commission. His term will go for one more year, and it is the one that would expire July one, twenty twenty-two. The other two terms, the other two planning commissioners' seats that will be up for reappointment, those actually will go into effect in July. And like I said, for this, this time around, we have two planning commission terms that will be up for appointment. One is the seat that's, or the term that's being filled right now by Commissioner Chris Garnon. And the other one is by John Richardson. Again, they both expire on July one, twenty twenty-one. Both of them have served on the planning commission for sixteen years. We did publish the notice of pending vacancy in the Union Democrat on March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And we provided the instructions to the applicants and required all applications be submitted to the city by April ninth. We received nine applications, and all of those applications are included with the staff report. We received an application from Bess Levine, James Grinnell, Stephen Opie, Kurt Bryant, Rodney Dittler, Tom Miller, Aaron Mulch, or Much, sorry, John Richardson, and John Yim. So those were the applications that were received. All were provided to the mayor. And then the mayor made his selection for recommendation to the council. And as stated in the recommendations, we're looking, he is looking for consensus for Bess Levine for the one-year term that expires July one, twenty twenty-two. Jim Grinnell with a four-year term that will expire in July, on July one, twenty twenty-five. And then Stephen Opie for another four-year term that also would expire July one, twenty twenty-five. Again, the one for the one-year term, the one that Bess, he's seeking for approval for Bess, that one would begin immediately upon appointment. The other two would begin in July.
So Mary Rose, with these, are these gonna be voted on? Traditionally, in the past, have we voted on each one? Because honestly, I can't remember, and it seems to come before us, or are we gonna vote on these as a whole?
It was listed, it's however the motion wants to be. We listed them separately in case you wanted to vote on them separately. Or you can have a motion to be listed as a whole. It is one agenda item.
Okay.
However, the council members so choose.
Okay. So thank you, Rochelle. And Rochelle, I'll give you an apology publicly now. I should have done a little more due diligence and reached out to the people that did apply. And I did, and I had a lot of stuff come up and that I didn't pick. So Rochelle saved me, and I appreciate that. I just do thank you.
No problem. And thank you for them too, because they didn't hear him back until today, so.
Yes. Yeah, it was, it was an interesting process to go through. I don't think, I don't think we've had this many people apply in probably over twenty years. It's good to see people are wanting to get involved. I think it's great. I picked these three after really talking to them, going through all the applications. There was a few other people in the stack that I personally knew. And all three of these individuals seem to be very business-friendly, very environmentally minded. I think they'll do well in these positions, people that are pretty open-minded and also will be very kind to city staff. I can't reiterate that enough, how it is important as not only council members, but planning commissioners and others that are very kind to city staff. Because sometimes things get under pressure, people are under pressure, but it's important to remember, we need to be kind to city staff. So I guess I will look for any council member questions or comments, and then we'll turn it over to public comment and bring it back to the council.
So you just talked to three of the candidates?
I talked to four of them pretty in-depth. I picked out, picked out the applications, and then I talked to four of them pretty in-depth.
And environmentally, could you go through your criteria again?
I, again, I was looking for a good planning commissioner. It sounds like I'm being set up here, but we can talk about this.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, I am. She's admitted. So.
You are. I, I find this process deeply flawed.
So checks and balances, you find, like packing a Supreme Court?
Yeah, rather.
Okay.
I mean, I think that, that there should have been more discussion among council members about the, about the candidates. I mean, you know, I'm finding this, it's kind of a preordained decision. And I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the council manager government format allows for a more democratic process.
Well, again, this is part of a checks and balances. It's in our constitution and part of our democratic process. And you never once contacted me. I did talk to Councilmember Such about one member.
Well, what about the other direction? I mean, you never contacted me either.
That's true.
And I had no access to these, to these applications until Friday. So that's the first time I saw them.
Okay, so again, I don't know what to tell you, so you can bring it up in a motion if you like. But again, this is part of the checks and balances system that we have. It looks like Mayor Pretend Plummer would like to say something.
I just think you need to remember that after speaking with Councilmember Such, that it would be a violation of the Brown Act to contact you to seek advice on. And there would be different ways that one could go about it, but just to contact you about it probably would have been inappropriate.
I mean, should we break the Brown Act, Dan? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that, but I'm saying, you know, not that Colette can't speak for me, but. I mean, it kind of indicates, you know, whether, you know.
Colette speaks for herself. She's made that pretty clear, and I'm proud to work with her.
Yeah.
I just want to say something. It feels like it's getting a little hostile here.
Oh, it is.
But Matt and Mark, I want to bring it to your attention. It was Matt that asked her why she, you know, that asked why she didn't talk to him. And so it wasn't a man that was breaking the Brown Act.
The Brown Act kind of kneecaps us all sometimes for what would be nice interchange and.
No, I agree. I agree, but I just, you know, I didn't think it was really fair to attack her about that.
I'm not attacking, I'm just reminding that we are subject to it and it.
So, I'll, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Garaventa.
Well, what I was going to say is that, and I think Doug's probably about to say it, is that what we have in our ordinance and our policies and procedure is, is that this is the process that we use to have the mayor do a recommendation, and then it's approved by the rest of the council. If that needs to be changed, or if we all think that needs to be changed, then we need to come up with a, a different system of doing so. But since that's not in, not in practice right now, this is the system we have, for better for worse. That's just what I was going to say. And Doug, I don't know if you, that's where you were going.
Yeah, and so, so as largely where I was going, and so just a reminder for the public, when we talk about the Brown Act. Uh, once one member of the council has talked to another member of the council, those council members can't have a conversation with another member about that same topic without breaking the, the Brown Act. So that's, that's, so for people who are out there watching from the public, I just want them to understand what the conversation is. It is true that the way that our handbook is currently written, it is a requirement that these appointments come from the mayor, which is appointed by the council. And then they are subject to ratification by the full council. And it's just the process. I mean, doesn't, there's nothing foregone in, in terms of who's going to be selected. It's just within the, the purview of the mayor to make the recommendation, but they still are subject to that ratification. Part of the reason that rule is in there is so that we don't get into Brown Act type of situations where we'd be violating it. So.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd kind of like to ask Doug, in his experience, is there, are there other jurisdictions that you're familiar with that do a different system than what we are doing?
I have seen subcommittees, but this is probably 80 to 90% of how appointments occur.
Okay.
And, and they are, so, so at, at city council level. So when you have city appointments. So I have seen subcommittees of city councils, but you could never have, you would still be limited to only having two members of the council conduct the interview and come back with a recommendation.
And bring forth a recommendation.
Yeah, so you would still be, you would still be subject to that process. I have never seen a full council evaluate all the applications for appointments.
Okay. And just to follow up to that, in that experience of the 10 or 15, 20% that do, do you see a marked difference in comfort level, quality level of outcome? Or is that subjective?
I think it's subjective. I think it really depends on the personality of the, of the city council and the city in general. Generally speaking, most cities have, struggle with even getting enough applicants candidly. And so having too many applicants is quite the luxury. And I think that's even true for, historically for Sonora. And so it's a good problem to have, and, and so you're always going to have problems, so you just want to have higher quality ones. I would say this is a higher quality problem. And so I, I, it, it, I think it's more just related to the personality of the, of the council and of the city.
Well, just for the record, I did read the municipal code, so I do know the process. I just don't agree with it.
Fair enough. And on the note of having the problem of too many applicants, I would like to thank all of the applicants for coming forward. And we have very, a great many, it's an embarrassment of riches with a great many qualified people. And as our attorney said, it's a, it's a lovely problem to have. And thank you very much.
So, um, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Such. Okay. You know, one of the things, and I think just about everybody up here, including Ann, can admit to, I'm pretty accessible by the public, by the council, by everyone. So I think Colette and Ann are the only ones that haven't came over yet, and it's been mainly because of COVID. But, you know, I have people stop by the house all the time, that sort of thing. So I'm pretty darn accessible. I don't have any buddies that I appointed. Matter of fact, one of my buddies did apply, and I had to look him in the eye and tell him that I didn't appoint him. Again, I chose these people based on qualifications. And qualifications alone, people that I've had conversations with. But again, maybe when you're mayor, you'll get up here and I can oppose you just like you have me. So we'll go there, and that's fine. But, but again, it's, it's just one of those things. So, um, Councilmember Such, I believe you wanted to speak.
Well, I, I actually agree with Ann. This is the second time since I've been on council that we've had a, an appointment. And I will say that both times I've been disappointed. I thought that there were some pretty extraordinary applicants in here. And I'm just curious what the process is like. Do you ask them the same questions? Is it just like a friendly conversation? How do you make your decision?
I've been interviewing for, what, close to 25 years now, hiring and that sort of thing. Usually, anytime I speak with someone, it comes, it, it usually starts out as a conversation. If you go through and just ask pointed questions, you're going to get pointed answers. My whole idea and the whole process of this was not getting a pointed answer. It, it's to get the, the idea of how they think about a law. The council does something, the planning commission has to make a decision on it. How are they going to think about that? Do they have certain people that they're trying to keep happy? You know, that sort of thing. And my goal was, hey, just because I appoint you, don't try to make me happy. Do what's right. So if we disagree and you're doing what's right, then that's just, that's just the way it is. So that's my thinking process. That's how I talk. That's how I talk to these individuals. And that's the way I went.
Were you, can I still ask questions? Were you able to ask them anything about cannabis, for instance?
I honestly stayed.
And I don't know if you should answer that.
It's, no, I, I can answer pretty, pretty clearly. I stayed off of cannabis. It's just like when, oh gosh, when we've seen Supreme Court nominations go forward and it's televised, and they start asking pointed questions that may come back before. Again, that's why I asked about what their thought process is on the laws. How they feel about how the city council does the laws, and who they have to answer to in the end. Again, if they say, well, I got this group over here that's my buddies, or whatever else, well, wait a second here. That's not the way you should be governing. Any other questions?
So, for, for the, I, do either of our council ladies find that these, any of these candidates are unqualified, or is it just the process that you're unhappy with? Because I'd sure like to hear, I, I, I think they're fine. And we had an embarrassment of very well-qualified candidates, I thought. But if you, I'd be, well, not thrilled, because we don't want to drag anybody in public.
Right.
But if you feel somebody's unqualified, then I think now's the time for us to find out about it. Many of these people I do not know personally.
I, I don't want to name any names. I actually found them less qualified than other candidates. I, I did find them less qualified than some of the other candidates. So, just disappointing.
Okay.
I thought it was a rare opportunity here in this packet. I would have selected other candidates.
And you will. And you will. Have we had public comment yet?
Uh, no, I'm getting ready to ask for public comment. So I will turn it over to public comment unless any other council members have any questions or comments.
And you have one, or I'll just make the announcement. If you have a public comment for item number six of the agenda, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or star nine if you're on a phone. And we do have one public comment right now from Tristan Zalietta. And so, Mr. Mayor, if you will.
Okay, go ahead, Tristan.
Transparency versus opacity is a, an easy solution. And I don't think that holding on to the final decision-making is a very good, how should we say, a model to be presenting as being, as, as part of the motivation.
Okay, thank, thank you, Tristan.
Your next public comment, Mr. Mayor, is Beezy Smith.
Go ahead, Beezy. And just to let you know, Beezy, I did receive your email, and thank you.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with the unmute feature this evening. Um, I, my, my, my largest concern is that I feel that I don't know what the criteria are that, that we're looking for in terms of planning commission. I know I have my own idea on what I would be looking for if I were a council member. And I feel, because this is such a critical committee, probably the most important in terms of its impact on the future development of our, of our city, and the types of businesses that are approved, the type of signage that gets approved, the other major decisions that are made regarding housing development. So many decisions are made by the planning commission that are, that are then sent on to the city council for approval. It would seem to me that there needs to be more understanding for all of us in this, that live in and work and play in the city of Sonora regarding what the vetting process is, and what the criteria are that are used to select members of the city council. That's my comment. Thank you. I didn't mean the city council, I meant the planning commission. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Beezy.
Your next public comment is from Barbara Dressler.
Oh, go ahead, Barbara.
Um, hi, thank you. I would like to just point out, Matt, that you really started the conversation by mentioning court packing and checks and balances, completely inappropriate, I think, to start a look, a reasonable conversation about whether your choices, and only speaking with four of them out of the total number of applicants, was an appropriate process. And I think the questions asked about how and what questions you asked, if you have done a lot of interviewing, you know that very often it is a requirement that every applicant be asked the same questions, so that there's no favoritism or unbalanced decision-making. I also do want to point out, again, as it has been pointed out, that Mark Plummer asking why Matt, or why Ann wasn't following Brown Act when Matt asked Ann why she didn't contact him. So I think that that's a second era, error in how we're proceeding in this process. The other thing is, again, with only four conversations, Matt, it does seem like this is a process that was decided in advance, that you didn't feel it important to contact other candidates who are other council members, two at least, feel were appropriate, possibly more so than your choices. So I think we're looking at a, a situation that your credibility is not good for the fact that you keep falling back on the argument that you're the mayor, so that's that. You're not giving any information about your decision-making process. So I am also very disappointed that you have taken this stand and that you have not shared and been transparent with your decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Your next public comment is from Nikki Coleman.
Go ahead, Nikki.
I just wanted to quickly express my support for Bess Levine. One, one positive piece here is seeing the next generation wanting to get involved, and I think she would be a great asset to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
And at this time, Mr. Mayor, I do not see any other additional public comment.
Well, I would like to say before this that I did not promise anybody anything. I, I'm not sure exactly how much more I need to talk about transparency. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know exactly what I need to say. It sounds like I'm being accused of something. But again, if anybody knows anything about me, I'm not, I'm not like that. So I, again, Barbara, I'm not, I'm not sure where this is going. But, you know, again, I, I haven't promised anybody anything. I went through these. I, I did my due diligence. Now it's the council's turn to say they either agree or disagree. That's part of the process, and this is part of the process of checks and balances. It bothers me a little bit that Ann, and again, she wouldn't make eye contact with me tonight or anything. So that's, that told me a lot of what was going to happen. So I knew something was going to happen. So again, you know, I think I've been transparent, and I think we, I would like to call for motions in second. And I guess if the council wants to separate them, we can do it.
Well, may I say, I am not attacking you. I am attacking the process. So please do not take it personally. I know, although you did tell me once that you don't run for office to win friends, but.
You, you'll never win friends in office.
But I am not calling your, your character into question. I am calling the process into question.
I, I appreciate that, Ann. You know, and it's, it's just, I mean, it's a, it's a job, and I had to do it. And again, it's not fun. Again, I had to look one of my buddies in the eye and tell them I didn't pick them. And that was, that was pretty tough. So however the council wants to do it, Councilmember Garaventa?
Well, I wasn't necessarily going to go for the motion. What I was going to ask is, if, if this was the time to ask if we could, at some point, set up a discussion item where we talk about how we'd make appointments. And either, so we can get, kind of get this settled out, separate from this, obviously from this particular one, because this is where we're at.
So.
In the process.
One of the things that's going to be later discussed on the strategic plan, but is the ability to bring back a handbook for review this year to the council. So that will be something that's going to be reviewed again by the council by the end of this calendar year.
And so that would be the appropriate time to discuss as a council.
Yes, because.
Options, options other than what we have for appoint, uh, committee and commission appointments.
It would require a rewriting of the rules and procedures of the city council, of the process of appointment to committees and commissions, which are in the city council handbook.
Okay. I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is, in that process, can we bring that discussion up as a council?
Yes.
I'm. If we're interested in it, I'm sure we can. Because obviously, it's a bone of contention for, for people, one way or the other. So I think the only way to resolve it is to have a, have a discussion about it. And I'm just looking to figure out a, a vehicle way of doing that at some future date.
I appreciate that, and I would, I would endorse something similar. Thank you.
If we're interested in it, we'll contemplate it.
Okay.
But, and that's.
I'm just looking for a discussion. I'm not looking, necessarily looking for change. I'm just looking for a discussion.
Yeah. So. I will move to approve the entire slate en banc of the mayor's appointments or choices for the Sonora City Planning Commission.
May I ask a question? Are, are we doing them all, all together?
I.
Can you clarify your motion?
I'm sorry, yeah, that's why, didn't, I thought I, I was thinking en banc, uh.
You can do it either way.
So, yes.
You can just clarify.
All three of them, yes.
So, Mayor Protem did make a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? We have Mayor Protem Plummer made a motion. Councilmember Garaventa made a second. Any discussion before the vote?
I, I just would say that I'd rather vote independently, and, you know, independently, but, or not all as one. I think that that's a better way to vote, but I'll follow. I would also prefer individually, but the motion is on the floor, so.
Actually, I can, I can withdraw my motion. Or my, my, withdraw my second, rather.
That's.
I, I, that's fine with me if we do this separately.
Okay.
To see if there's, to see if there's still a second.
Okay. Any, anyone want to make a second?
To vote in, individually?
No.
Oh.
Vote for all three.
Oh.
Okay. So it looks like it dies for lack of a second. So.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, no.
I'll set.
Whoever.
So I would recommend that we just, in the order, just do motions and per, per line item.
Okay.
I will, I will move to. How do you say that? I will move to appoint for the mayor to appoint Bess Levine.
No. Just appoint, yeah.
Just read it? Just read it?
Yeah, uh, you're ratifying the mayor's recommendation.
I just read it as it's written there?
Uh, no, you'd be, it would be, um, so if you're like, for instance, if you're taking the first one, it would be um, a motion to ratify the mayor's recommendation to appoint and then.
Alrighty. I um, move to ratify the mayor's recommendation to appoint Bess Levine to serve as the Sonora City Planning Commissioner for a one-year term expiring on July 1st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Sagerstrom, second by Councilmember Garaventa. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Aye.
And Councilmember Satch?
Aye.
Okay, so that one's taken care of. Looking for another motion?
In that case, I will, I move to adopt the mayor's recommendation to appoint James Grinnell to serve as City uh, of Sonora Planning Commissioner for a four-year term expiring on July 1, 2025. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, so a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, second by Councilmember Garaventa. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Nay.
And Councilmember Satch?
Nay.
Okay, passes three to two.
And lastly, I will move to approve the mayor's recommendation to appoint Stephen Opie to serve as City Sonora, City of Sonora Planning Commissioner for a four-year term expiring on July 1, 2025. Second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, second by Councilmember Garaventa. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro, Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Nay.
And Councilmember Satch?
Nay.
Okay, passes three to two. We now have three new planning commissioners. Well, two of those will be starting in July and one, Bess Levine, will be starting immediately. Okay, so on to item number seven. Consideration to expand the total number of Vision Sonora Committee members to include two members of the public for a total of nine committee members. Mary Rose.
Okay, sorry, it was taking me a while to turn on my mic. Um, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the item before you is a consideration to expand the total number of Vision Sonora Committee members to include two members of the public for a total number of nine committee members. Um, in 2015, as I'm sure you are aware, the city of Sonora created the Vision Sonora Committee, which is a standing committee of the city council comprised of two council members, two board of supervisors, the city administrator, the community development director, and the Twomey County Transportation Council Executive Director, who currently is Darren Grossi. Vision Sonora is a community revitalization plan that was initiated to provide the city of Sonora with a plan to create a more vibrant community by addressing areas along the Highway 49 and Washington Street corridors. However, in most recent years, members of the public have taken a very active role in participating within the Vision Sonora Committee. And to, in order for members of the public to be able to fill, fully participate in Vision Sonora Committee meetings, the Vision Sonora Standing Committee approved at their last meeting um, a recommendation for the city council to expand the total number of committee members to include two members of the public for a total of nine committee members. I've included the agenda item from the last um, Vision Sonora Committee where the, it was approved unanimously to expand the total number to nine. Um, and so that would follow that process at the city council. So chooses to expand the Vision Sonora Community Committee to include two members of the public. That would follow the same process in which we just discussed with the planning commission, that it would be an application process whereby members of the public would apply. Um, the mayor then would review those applications and make a recommendation for ratification of a majority of the city council members. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
So currently, just for the public's benefit, who is on the committee right now? I, I can read it right here, but on the Vision Sonora Committee?
So currently, there is a standing committee of the city council, which includes two city council members, which is um, Councilmember uh, Sagerstrom and Councilmember Satch. Um, two board of supervisors that most recently changed, um, and that is um, Supervisor David Goldenberg and Supervisor Ryan Campbell. And then you have myself, the city administrator, Rochelle Kellogg, your community development director, and Darren Grossi, who's your TCTC Executive Director. And because many of the projects concern transportation, um, that is why we also include TCTC and Darren Grossi on the committee. But I will say that the members of the public have taken quite an active role in a lot of projects downtown. Um, and as a member of the committee, Vision Sonora Committee, um, we want to encourage member participation. And so um, as the city administrator, I um, voted to expand um, the um, expansion of the two members to include two members of the public.
Okay.
Was that a unanimous vote?
It was a unanimous vote. Um, which Supervisor Campbell was absent that day.
Oh, yes, go ahead. Sorry, I was looking.
For our city administrator, our you supported this because you believe that will bring, you know, more breadth or different focus and different interest and experience to the committee?
I, I do, and I believe the committee believes that as well. Um, like I said, we, we have an active participation of members of the public. Um, but due to um, Brown Act governance of standing committees versus add up committees and so forth, uh, we wanted to make sure that those members of, of the public could participate as actual members of the committee. Um, and so that is why the recommendation is to expand the committee to include those two members of the public. To include two members of the public.
Right. Not specific ones yet.
Not specific members, but just include, yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I kinda like to hear a little bit from Colette and Ann about this issue, just maybe what their thoughts are on it also.
I'd be, I'd be happy to talk if you want me to.
Absolutely, go ahead.
I just ask that we recognize the extraordinary work that has been done by the non-Brown Act or the non-standing committee. Um, that's been, it's a group that has brought passion and energy and talent and their own money and their own fundraising to this, to this community for years. I mean, the list of their accomplishments is impressive. And um, although I don't think that I can say you should choose from that committee, I, if I can say that, I would like to say that because they really are the ones, I mean, they have been the movers and shakers here. And they're often people who wanna be on committees who are not movers and shakers. And there's not one person on this committee who is not. Um, and I would just ask that that we do, I mean, it just feels like the right thing to, to award someone from the current non-Brown Act Committee to this uh, the standing committee. Unless that's illegal for me to say.
You'll find out.
Yeah.
Alright. I, I, I just think they've, they've earned the right, this, the right to a seat at the table.
Yeah, I mean, they have, you know, I think the, the Vision Sonora projects, I mean, are all due to the momentum of these community members. And um, you know, it would be devastating to lose that energy. Like, uh, and they need to be, they need to be part of the decision-making process. So um, I, you know, I was, I'm, I'm new to the committee, but I think that, you know, just as, as Colette mentioned, the passion um, and the longevity of these people who believe in, you know, in the future of Sonora and the best, the best way to present it to the world. That they should be recognized and made part of, um, of the progress forward.
Okay. Anyone else?
Agree of expanding it, but it sounds like there are a lot of good reasons to do so. And I didn't realize that we had so few members of the public on it actually at current. So that is an important factor and we need public participation, especially with something where we really want to make this an overarching vision for future development.
Maybe, maybe, and if anybody that was not appointed to the planning commission tonight is listening, maybe they could also apply for the Vision Sonora Committee also, cause it sounds like we have some really good people. So um.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead, Lee, and um, I, you know, um, Vision Sonora was a plan that came up. It's been a while now, hasn't it?
Long time.
Um, yeah, and uh, there's a lot of participation and, of people in the community came. And one of the things that you know, not everyone likes every single part of, of, of the Vision Sonora program. And um, so um, I think it's, I, I think it's good to remind the council that they actually, it's the council that has the final say over, over Vision Sonora. The subcommittee um, and, or the committee and the subcommittee does, does a lot of the um, action work, but it's still up to the council to, to make the final decisions on things that go on with, with the Vision Sonora. Um, and I think that some of that has, has been lost in the past by actions of um, the way that the committee was run in the past, not the committee, but some of the subcommittees in the past. So I just wanna uh, remind that, that it's, we are the ones that are um, beholden to the cit, the citizens' sonora and have to make the decisions and uh, and uh, make sure that Vision Sonora is running um, the way that, for the, the right way for the citizens and so um, other than that point, um, having uh, public as part of a committee is, is always a good, a good thing. We have it for most of our other committees. Um, so I don't, I don't see a problem with adding a couple people, um, members of the public to help with that process.
Yeah, and it's, it, and this is gonna be a um, like, a committee appointment to where they would have, if, if council approves it, to where they'll have to fill out um, 700 forms, correct? Is it 700?
Form 700.
Yeah.
If you have fair political practices.
Basically, they say what they own, you know, they go through their um, financials, all that sort of stuff. So for some people, it's a big paper to fill out and others, it's one page. So. So, any other councilmember input?
Vision Sonora Committee, you had to fill out a form 700?
To apply, if you're on it.
Yeah, if you're on it.
If you, if you get appointed.
You'd, you have to do a 700 form.
Are they doing that at the planning commission?
They should.
Yes, they are.
They're required to.
Okay, I had no idea. I mean, I, you know, I've been busy filling out my own, but um, had no idea that everybody else had to. Okay, thank you.
Transparency.
Clarifying, oh yes.
Transparency and public disclosure and it, it can get in depth. A lot of, a lot of people don't realize what many of us have to go through and investments, you have to label everything out, so. Any other?
Yes. I'd like to thank Councilmember Garaventa for reminding us about some of the history and the focus of who's ultimately responsible. Cause it's sometimes, when these are often driven by public friends of, the friends of the council rather than council members, it, it's easy to forget that we're in charge. Frankly, in this case, it was a little both. Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other.
I just wanna, just in defense of that group, it was by no fault of their own. It was allowed by the city and it was, and it was allowed by the council member on the thing. So I just don't want any, I don't want anyone to feel like they've been blamed for bad behavior.
And I didn't mean it that way and I'm sorry if it sounded that way.
I, I, I wasn't sure you did. I, I didn't think you did necessarily. I just wanted, I don't know if anyone's on here, but I just wanted.
The enormous work of so many volunteers who've put in a great deal of work.
Right.
And, and we need to recognize that and remember it and appreciate it.
Okay, and I guess we will go to public comment on this matter.
If you have public comment in regards to this item, please raise your hand, using the raise your hand feature or star nine if you're on a, a phone line. And you do have one comment from BZ Smith.
Oh, go ahead, BZ.
Oh, who's her? Lost her again. BZ, we did unmute you. Just wanna make sure you're there.
Hold on, hold on. There you go. Do the, yeah, hi. Do the appointees need to be a resident of the city of Sonora?
That was going to be my clarification question based on what the direction of the, the council so chooses.
Okay, so that, thank you, that's answered. Thank you. Then the other, just as a comment that um, it seems to me like it's really vital that, that this happens, that the, the membership is expanded to include community members. One of the reasons is because so many of the projects for Vision Sonora require a great deal of community um, support in terms of fundraising and having those good, solid people uh, who are very active in the community to be able to help with that process, um, really, really um, can make things happen where it isn't all falling on the, the financial responsibility of taxpayers, but, but also coming under the jurisdiction of donors. Um, and I just wanna mention um, the efforts of it letting people who are really in, invested in, not only financially invested, I mean um, personally invested in what we want to see for the, for our city in the years to come. And again, that sense of belonging and being included in the decision process. It's a, it's a three-pronged thing you got going here with Vision Sonora and the planning commission. And then the ultimate decision of, of the city council. And the Sonora Vision Committee is a really exciting way for community members to have a, a vital role in, in what our city does become in another 20, 25 years, when I might be on the ground. Thank you. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you, BZ.
At this time, is there any other public comment? I did see an additional hand, but I just wanna make sure. Um, there is no additional public comment at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, bring it back to the council. More discussion?
Thank you. Um, I move uh, to expand the total number of Vision Sonora Committee members to include two members of the public for a total of nine committee members.
I second that.
Okay, so real quick, um, I guess this be, what do you call it, point of order? Um, are we gonna discuss beforehand if they're gonna be uh, within the city limits or? Within the county? This always concerns me.
What I would do is I would take the motion as it currently stands and then have a discussion item um, so that we would know what the appointment process would look like.
Okay. Okay, so we had a motion by Councilmember Sagerstrom and a second by Councilmember Satch. Okay. Okay, so any more discussion before we call for a vote?
Um, so I, I, I missed what the counselor said. Are we making that decision now?
So.
After, okay. Okay, well, if we're just making a decision on whether the city or county residents.
Expand it.
After, after, after we decide, that's fine with me.
And then we'd be looking for, it wouldn't be an action item, it would be direction from the council so that when people apply, we, we would know whether or not that would be taken in consideration.
Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Aye.
And Councilmember Satch?
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero and then.
So, so my feeling is, is that at least at the outset, it should be members inside the city. The, the Vision Sonora is, it well encompasses within the city. It's actually the, the state highway that's within the city. If we can't find um, suitable people, then I think we can look at that time to whether we wanna expand out. But I think it's, behooves us that most everything we do is, has to, is usually a city member, re, city citizen as opposed to someone from the outside, so.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with you.
Well, since we're giving direction to staff, I wanna concur because it's the people in the city who are gonna live with the results. And I think that they should have first look at it.
Councilmember Satch?
I just wanna bring it to everyone's attention that the current committee is not just city um, residents. It's beyond that and um, some of the very active people are not city residents. And the Brown Act Committee is not city residents, so I don't know. And the Brown Act Committee is not city residents. So I don't know why the members of the public need to be city residents. And our city serves everyone in the county. It doesn't, it doesn't just affect city residents. So I would ask actually that we expand it.
Well.
As it currently is, on both committees.
I may add something that I think your, your position that a great many of the members already are not in residence of the city argues in favor of requiring first anyway that city residents be, be represented and most represented since a great number of them are not. I just, I think you and Ann and I don't know where Darren lives, so, but I think we should be trying to better represent the city right now and not just general interests.
I don't agree, but.
Okay.
I just think it excludes some huge talent that has already put a lot of work into this.
So. Right now. And did you give your?
They live on the perimeter of Sonora. I mean, you know, there may be, you know, two blocks outside the city limits. And, and you're sort of talented and, and committed people. You know, maybe we could have just in specify that one member be within the city limits and one, one public member be within the city limits and one public member from the surrounding area.
Okay. Again, I think currently right now it needs to stay within the city limits for the two public members. That's just my opinion. Kled had a great point. She points out that there are already members on there that are not in the city. So we should have members that are in the city since this is going to affect the city. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and if you have a majority of people that aren't in the city making decisions, I, I can see that point. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I understand the point, but it does, it doesn't preclude them from participating if they've already participated in the past when they're not been on the, on the, on the subcommittee or the regular committee. So I still think it should be members that live inside the city and, and the folks that are on the periphery are, are, can still participate. Doesn't mean that, it just means they don't have a vote on the, the city, the, the main committee.
Yep, I do agree with you.
Is this a position that could be modified if, if there's a, a great candidate, you know, down the line? Or this will be in perpetuity once it's, once we vote?
So just to be clear, this is only direction. So this is not an action item. So nothing in here is binding. It's just setting, it's just setting some direction for the evaluation of the process.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, that subcommittee right now no longer exists because we have to, that's why we are including two additional members of the public to come into compliance with the Brown Act.
Okay, so do we need to call a vote on this or just, this is just a consensus?
So the direction I have is I have three, a majority of the council that wants residency of both members of the two additional members, excuse me, the two additional committee members to be, to have city residency.
Okay. Onto item number eight. Receive an update of the Social Equity Committee. Approve the Social Equity Committee additions to the city value statement and discussion and possible action of moving the Social Equity Committee to a community-owned committee. Mary Rose.
Did you turn me off again, Jerry? So this item before you is in regards to our Social Equity Committee. As the council is aware, we have been bringing back updates to the city council. The city council tasks the Social Equity Committee to review and possibly update the city value statement. This is the next item that the Social Equity Committee has recently drafted and is bringing forward for you for adoption. The committee has met over several meetings to review and discuss possible additions to the current city value statement. So I included that city value statement in your packet. So these, the below statements that are bold in your packet are not standalone value statement for the committee, but they are in additions to, to be incorporated into the overall city value statement that was approved and adopted by the city council in two thousand and six. So the city, the Social Equity Committee is recommending the following additions to the city value statement. I'll go ahead and read those for the record. We value our city's social and racial diversity and our commitment to protection, safety, prosperity, and the sense of well-being for all. We recognize the diverse groups of people who live on this land before us and their continued contributions to the city's history. And we value the Tuolumne and Chicken Ranch bands of Miwok Indians and respect their heritage, culture, and lasting impact in this committee, in this community through the centuries, excuse me. So again, these would be three value statements that would be incorporated into your already approved city value statement. And then also your last item for discussion is on the January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Council directed staff to bring back an item for possible discussion and action of moving the Social Equity Committee to a community-owned committee. I will say the topic was addressed at the last Social Equity Committee on April twelfth. There was no decision that was recommended by the committee at that time, but we are bringing it forward as directed by the council at this time to see what the council's intentions are. And I am sure to answer any questions. And your two council member representatives are Councilmember Sutch and Councilmember Garaventa.
Councilmember Segasrum.
Oh, thank you. I, I'm just curious on the, the, the second two bullet points, values. The diverse groups of people who lived on this land before us, these are other diverse groups beyond the Miwok?
Y- yes, I'm sorry. Councilmember Garaventa, he didn't have your mic on, but he did answer, yes.
I, I heard, I heard it.
Yeah, I hummed into the.
If, if I could, you know, Chinese lived here.
Yeah, the Chi, the Chinese, the Mexicans, yeah, I know. So it was, it just, it's right, reading it, it's a little.
It's a little redundant, maybe. I don't know, but, but.
I mean, that was intentional. Integrate the.
That was intentional.
Whatever. It's your committee.
Now, the, the Cherkees even have a big plot of land up in Tuolumne also. So one of my really good friends is the chief of the Cherokee, Tuolumne Band of Cherokee Indians. I do. And they are all very diverse. Very, very diverse. Okay, so I don't hear a lot of discussion, so. I, I don't have any issues with these three. I, I think they're, they're good. I mean, it's, we value our city's social and racial diversity and our commitment to protection, safety, prosperity, and a sense of belonging for all. You know, if we do our jobs as council members, that's what we do. We want to make sure everybody's included in business and housing and parks and public safety and fire and, you know, so I, to me, it's common sense. I, I think it's great.
I, I just want to give some clarification on the third bullet point. Nikki met with tribal leaders from both tribes to, and they wrote, they wrote, the three of them wrote that one together. So thanks, Nikki.
Okay. Any other council member discussion, I guess?
I would like to, I think we ought to look at, I mean, we have actually two questions and so I just want to make sure we don't approve the one and then rush over the other. So I would happily, well, we have to wait for public comment. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Okay. Any other council member discussion? Okay. So I guess I will ask for a public discussion on the three values.
So if you have any public comment on this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or star nine on a phone. And the first public comment you have is from Nikki Coleman.
Mary Rose, I actually wanted to speak on the second bullet point, so I'll lower my hand and I'll speak when that comes up.
Okay, um, hold on, just one second, please, Nikki. Um, I guess we're going to have public comment on the whole thing, which is, which is perfectly fine. So.
And then you'd bring it back. They're just broke up for purposes of motion and things of that nature. So public comment would be on either or.
Yes.
Okay, so just for the public comment, the Social Equity Committee additions to the city value statement, discussion and possible action of moving the Social Equity Committee to a community-owned committee.
So again, your first public comment is coming from Nikki Coleman. Nikki, you can comment on, on, on anything of the added item.
I just wanted to make sure you knew that, so.
Thank you. Aloha, Kako, Mayor Hawkins and council. I'd like to first thank you for the opportunity to serve as a member of this committee. I respect and have a deep admiration for each of you. Despite any differences, I hope we can agree that now is not the time to withdraw the council's support of social equity. On the eve of the first day of deliberations in the Derek Chauvin trial for the murder of George Floyd, this work is more important than ever, especially in rural communities like ours. Bringing awareness to the experiences of the marginalized in our community cannot be pushed aside any longer. The time is now. People of color and members of the LGBTQ community in Sonora are silently experiencing slurs, threats, and attacks that a majority of our population are never aware of. Just recently, an Asian American woman who lives in Sonora was physically attacked. Out of fear of retaliation, she refuses to publicly share her name and her story. We are suffering. We are being threatened and we don't talk about it out of fear. I say we because I am experiencing it firsthand too. While the conversations and the work it takes to bring these issues to light is difficult and oftentimes challenged by time constraints, that in no way is a just defense for not doing the work at all or moving it to the wayside for someone else too. When this council formed the Social Equity Committee, you created one of the first safe spaces that would finally take actionable steps towards doing right by our marginalized neighbors. With much respect to other local groups who have done social justice work in our community, it is precisely the endorsement and support of our city council that makes this committee legitimate, impactful, and actionable. This foundation sends a message to residents, tourists, and neighboring towns that diversity and inclusion for all is a priority for Sonora. And that while this work is challenging, we are up to that challenge of setting an example and paving the way for rural communities across the nation. And without this city's platform, the level of legitimacy and public accountability is not there. As you're aware, our initial charge was to draft a racism resolution for the city of Sonora to review values and policy and perhaps the greatest charge of all, to engage with our community and make space for the marginalized members of our town. The work that we have done up until this point has prepared us to draft this resolution and was critical in establishing rapport with one another as we move into writing. If this committee has moved aside, out of it, excuse me, if this committee has moved outside of a city platform at this moment, all of the work, time, and sacrifice that we have made will amount to very little at a time when we are on the brink of accomplishing one of the most important tasks we were charged with. If you support dissolving this committee from the city platform, I ask you to deeply self-reflect and ask yourself why? What has changed? Who will benefit from removing the city's support of this work? How will this committee flourish and make an impact without the full endorsement and support from our city council? As our leaders, your support and commitment is heavily weighted. Please allow our work to continue and give us the opportunity to complete the task that we were charged with. Please give the marginalized residents of your community the opportunity to see that their sense of belonging is a city priority.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
Your next vote comment is from Beada, B-E-A-D-A.
Yes, thank you. Good job. Curiosity is the fuel for discovery, inquiry, and learning. And I want to thank you, Nikki, for your statement. I want to wholeheartedly support you and throw my support for the committee to continue under the city council. I want to also thank the city council for creating the very necessary social equity committee for the city of Sonora. This is a difficult yet important step in assuring all residents and visitors to Tuolumne County that they are welcome and safe here. The fact that our little county has taken up this work is to be mended. Small communities do not have the same needs or problems as larger communities. And I'm very proud that knowing, that knowing other committees can look toward Tuolumne County for guidelines when establishing their own social equity committees to, to dedicate it to creating a safe environment for visitors and Tuolumne residents alike. Sorry. I strongly support that the Social Equity Committee continue as a standing committee under the Sonora City Council. It was created to write a resolution for the city of Sonora and should be allowed to complete its job. I am also unsure why this is even in question as it is a job which clearly has not yet been completed. I want to thank you for your time and support.
Thank you.
So your next public speaker is Eric Rivera Jurado. I'm sorry if I did not say your name right, Eric. I apologize.
Not a problem. Just for the record, it's Eric Rivera Jurado. Thank you, Sonora City Council, for taking the time to hear me speak. I'll make my comments pretty brief. I am, I was involved in a racial incident in city, in Sonora at a bar. My wife was present. She wrote to your local report, your local newspaper about it, and it was written up and, and described. And so I've been following the work of this committee very closely and because it honestly is decisive as to the level of engagement I want to continue to have with my wife's home city and with the family that I share there as my nieces continues to grow. And I was very disheartened, honestly, to hear that the committee was looking to move out of city council and it sounds like to be a pure committee-run institution because I think that seriously is going to diminish and delegitimize the work that is being done. And quite frankly, I'm curious as well, as somebody else had commented, why this is even being discussed if the committee staff has already recommended that it remain as city council's function because it's not even finished its tasks that were assigned to it. As a person of color who does go to Sonora, it, I still have misgivings and concerns about going there and I am eagerly looking to see what is done with this committee and it will be a decisive factor in my level of engagement. As I said, I mean, I still don't go to the bar where I experienced the racial incident of, because of that. And I am hoping that the committee can see the great damage it would do certainly to individuals like me who are watching Sonora to see how it progresses here as a person of color as to whether or not this is a city that's going to honestly be welcoming and interested to have me as a visitor or even as a possible resident, depending on what my future plans look like. So with that, I also just like to add one more note on that point. We've, my wife's actually in fact reached out to the mayor and, about this issue and through Facebook and was told that the mayor would like to speak to her about it. She hasn't heard back yet and I would love to talk more about this incident offline or in whatever appropriate form given Brown Act limitations, but we're still waiting to hear back on that. So, so this committee was really a bright point for me in, in terms of seeing the city grow and foster a, a relationship hopefully with other people of color like me. And I'm, I would strongly urge the committee to not consider removing it from its current state until such time as the tasks have even been finished that they've been assigned. Thank you.
Just to throw out there, I've talked to a lot of people, so I apologize if I have somehow was not, I did not get back to your wife, but I still would like to talk to her. I've just, I'm not sure who that is. So I look forward to talking to her.
Certainly. I'll advise my wife to reach out to your office again.
Thank you.
So your next public speaker is from Karen Wood.
Go ahead, Karen.
I support the three additions to the value statement. However, I have significant concerns about removing the Social Equity Committee from under the jurisdiction of the city council. As our elected officials, you are responsible for issues impacting the city of Sonora. I am a member of a community group that is interviewing people from marginalized groups about their experiences in Tuolumne County. The level of hate and discrimination people face in this city is heartbreaking. It would be irresponsible for the city council to turn their backs on the very concerning issue in this county. However, I'm not surprised this question is on the agenda. Addressing racism and other forms of discrimination are hard work and cause discomfort for many. As we begin to look deeper and truly understand, it surfaces many feelings and emotions. We must not let our uncomfortableness govern us. I challenge you to continue to support this work with an open and curious mind under the jurisdiction of the city council. And I further challenge you to find a creative way to make this a committee equally held by the Board of Supervisors and Sonora City Council. This is important work to be done and even though This is important work to be done, and even though this committee has stumbled, we as a community must push forward because making Tuolumne County a socially equitable community will be beneficial to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your next public speaker is Megan Mills.
Go ahead, Megan. Nope, we can't hear you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Hi, my name is Megan Mills. She heard pronouns, and thank you so much for taking my comments today. I'd like to acknowledge the council members, everyone, and all of my community, fellow community members who have just spoken and stepped up to share their heart about this situation. Um, my family came here in 1974. We currently have three generations of people living in Sonora. And in this iteration of my community membership, I've been here for the past 10 years consistently. So, I graduated from Sonora Elementary after, was attending nine years of school there, one year at Sonora High, two years at Columbia College, and I've lived here for a very long time, so I know this community. And I just want to express my support for the social equity committee and say, this is needed. This is important to our community. It made me feel hopeful about living in an area where it is not safe for people of color or for people from the queer community or for people who may have disabilities that are unseen. So, I would like to express explicitly the need for this community or this committee and ask that the city council, please reflect, as Nikki said, please reflect on why this is even a discussion item. Why is this being moved to be eliminated when the work has barely begun? I really appreciate the time to express my support for this committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I believe Terry Alfred actually had her hand raised, and it was, her hand was actually lowered, so I'm going to let her go next before we, um, go to the next public speaker. Go ahead, Terry Alfred.
Thank you, council members. Um, I also want to, um, share my support of this, uh, committee. The social equity committee is vital to our community. I was also somewhat shocked that it was, um, that there was kind of talk about moving it to a more community, um, or going to create a committee, and I think that that would be detrimental. I think that we need to continue with the work, and the original work was to create this resolution. And I think there, there was a reason for the Brown Act. I think that that's kind of where, that we're getting hung up here, is that some people don't want to follow the Brown Act rules, but I think there's a reason for the Brown Act, and it's vital to this community, this committee right now, because it provides structure and scaffolding for having these difficult conversations so that we don't get distracted and we don't get sidelined. I really appreciate everyone who's provided community support. I have been going to most of these meetings because I, I work with the Latinx community here. I speak Spanish, and I hear stories of racism and discrimination on a regular basis. And I feel, I hear stories of fear, and I think it's vital that we, that this committee needs to stay connected to the city council, and it needs to remain under the jurisdiction of the city council. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your next, uh, public speaker is from Yeb, Y-E-B.
Okay, go ahead, Yeb.
Hello, council members. Thank you for having me. Um, I am just, um, here to um, encourage, um, the social equity committee to continue in the jurisdiction of the city. Um, as a queer and trans person myself, I have, um, heard many stories from friends and colleagues and even strangers of how unsafe we feel here. Um, currently, there's not even a gathering in person of this community. Um, I have also heard and know stories of other marginalized groups, including Black and Indigenous people of color and as well as people that, um, have, um, disabilities. And so, the, the mere fact, as I think somebody else mentioned, that it is even being considered disbanding this committee, to me, is a sign that we are not safe here. And so, I urge the committee to show up the way many, many cities across America are showing up now to engage in conversation about social equity and, and make sure that all members of your city are represented and considered in the decisions that are happening. The social equity committee will be that guiding source. It may not always be easy. You may not always want to hear what the social equity committee has to say, but somebody needs to be saying it. Otherwise, we are just a community that is supporting, uh, the dominant group of people. So, I urge the council, council members to consider not disbanding, um, the social equity committee from the city jurisdiction. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your next public speaker is Barbara Dressler.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Uh, thank you. Um, the social equity committee creates a social climate in Sonora that assures tourists from our state, our local residents, and from, uh, countries around the world that they are welcome in our community, in our small town, and that Sonora's history, which established with gold seekers, um, coming from, uh, every part of the globe to our community, continues today. The Sonora City Council should honor our diverse origins by continuing the support that social equity committee, uh, commission, sorry, committee provides today as an emblematic part of the city of Sonora and not, uh, removed from, uh, the city jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your next public speaker is from Mercedes Toon.
Oh, go ahead, Mercedes.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I am bringing from Campeche, Mexico in this moment. And I didn't want to miss this meeting because I think is extremely necessary that this committee stay under the jurisdiction of the Sonora City Council. I have lived in Tuolumne County for 21 years. And I could tell you innumerable stories, not only about myself, but about people that ha, I have supported, people that I have advocated for, people that I have worked together with. Usually, we talk about the benefits for people of color when we are working on dismantling racism. However, I want to talk about the benefits for everyone. It is not a benefit only for people of color. We cannot be safe unless everyone is safe. It can be justice until there is justice for everyone. Racism and discrimination are public health issues. I can show the impact of racism. And it's very clear the health issues that it causes. Not only the social, but the emotional, the physical. So, if we are talking about equity in our county, it has been a wonderful first step. But things are not resolved in a few months. It is an ongoing work, and I can understand if it makes uncomfortable some people. It is hard work. So, I invite you, city council, to consider not moving the social equity committee outside of the jurisdiction of the Sonora City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your next public comment is from Tristan Salayetta.
Go ahead, Tristan.
Um, this committee is a, is a brilliant bloom for the city of Sonora. I stand every Sunday, uh, for Black Lives Matter at Courthouse Park. I have since the very beginning, since Nikki and others started this off, and I've continued doing it the whole time. I, I take the pulse of the community. Every Sunday, I go out and I stand for Black Lives Matter. And, uh, people respond variously. I recommend it to everybody to come and participate so they can taste the temper of our community, and they can see what it's like instead of hypothecating, I'm sorry, wrong word, hypothesizing about it. I, I, the committee is doing so well. The thought of not continuing it in its proper, in its current state is, is, is really quite silly. I would welcome you to come and stand with me on Sunday, stand with us, and experience the community and see what it's like to see all the people that are, that are glad to stand for equity and to see those who oppose equity and to learn who they are, learn maybe then begin to consider how to be dealing with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your next public speaker is from Thad Waterbury.
Go ahead, Thad.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, now, I just want to, uh, voice my support to keep the social equity committee under the umbrella of the city council and to not sideline it by shoving it off to some other non-city, um, committee. You know, homelessness and the, uh, the racial issues in, that we have in Sonora aren't going to go away. And I think that the city of Sonora, uh, needs to address them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your next public speaker is from Ladonica Payne.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just really want to strongly support and encourage keeping the social equity committee under the city council. I was really surprised that this was on the agenda tonight. Um, this is really important work, and, um, yeah, I really support it keeping under city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your next public speaker is from a phone line with the last four digits of 3512. If you are on a phone line of 3512, please hit star six to unmute yourself.
Yeah, um, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, perfect, perfect. I, I just, um, was not really aware of the social equity, uh, committee or anything like that, and I guess I just kind of wanted to know, you know, I've been a member of this community my entire life, and I, you know, with the exception of there might be people doing stupid stuff, I haven't really seen actual, you know, uh, systematic racism. I don't see the court systems going after people. I don't see the police going after people of color. And I don't even see people not being able to buy homes because they're of a different color or, you know, their sexual identity or any of these things. So, I guess my question is, uh, what exactly does the social, uh, equity committee do?
We, we can answer those questions, we will answer those questions after the, uh, public comment.
Okay, okay, that's fine. That's all, that's all my question was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your next public speaker is from Pablo Lopez.
Go ahead, Pablo.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I think it's pretty apparent tonight, um, the overwhelming support the community has for this committee, right? And I think moving the community, uh, from under the umbrella of the, uh, city council intentionally or unintentionally sends this message that the city council does not inherently support or believe in social equity as a value that, you know, the community has. Um, I think in today's world, it's a standard practice that, um, in some form or shape, agencies, uh, corporations, you know,
Did you mute him, Jerry?
Pablo, go ahead and unmute. We accidentally hit something up here.
Okay, sorry, can you hear me?
Sorry about that, Pablo.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's okay. Uh, yeah, so, I would just say is that, you know, uh, all major organizations have in some way a group that functions in this shape, right? Um, Sonora has a wa, a history of widespread discrimination against the LGBTQ plus communities, the Latinx communities, Black communities, Asian Pacific communities, right? There's long histories of, you know, uh, things we've all experienced, right? It's not something that goes away when we stop talking about it. And to move this away from the control of the city feels kind of like a cheap attempt from the city council to dismiss the issues, to say, maybe we don't talk about it, we don't have to deal with them. It's kind of like side-stape in our responsibility, right? City council has the responsibility to provide safety and well-being of Sonora residents. Um, so I think the optics of saying, well, we don't want to deal with this, is really questionable. Um, so, I mean, again, I think, uh, the community says, you know, is, is supporting this. I think it's important to address it. I, I see that people are not happy with it. Um, but inherently, in issues like this, there's always going to be conflict, right? That's even more reason to have a committee give feedback and give advice as to how to proceed in a functional way, right? Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Pablo.
Um, Mr. Mayor, your next public comment is from Claire.
Go ahead, Claire.
Thank you. This is Claire Mills, and, um, I was recently able and honored to attend a meeting of the social, uh, uh, yes, a meeting of the social equity committee, and I was so impressed with the, with the commitment, with the intention, and with the respect that is being given to others who are different, others who may not look the same or speak the same or have the same beliefs. And it was so wonderful to be able to see members of my community, Sonora, embody those things that we want for everyone and, and particularly for our children. And with this committee and the work that it's doing, we are providing examples for those that may not have been aware that there were problems in the community. In my professional life, several, um, of my professional colleagues have come to Sonora to practice medicine and have left because they were not well-accepted into the main functioning of our county. People of color, people with different religious beliefs, um, people who have different ideologies politically. So, I would very much, very much like to commend the committee and, and to recommend that it, of course, stay under the purview of the city council, which is exactly where we need it to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your next public speaker is Beezy Smith. Oh, did she already speak? I'm sorry. Beezy, did you already speak on this item?
No, I did not, not on this one.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, please. Yes.
Okay, so, um, I've lived in Tuolumne County for almost 50 years, and in that 50 years, um, the, the become more and more, um, visible and self-evident. And, um, and also, we've learned a lot. I mean, I remember when I first moved here, there was no respect for the Native people of this community, none, zero. And I myself am Native-born, so that was always a very uncomfortable place for me personally, because I'm a member of a, of a tribe that's based in Oklahoma, and I'm very identified with my tribe. And yet, here in Tuolumne County, there was little or no respect for any of the groups of, um, Indigenous people who were at the roots of this land. And thank God, that has changed. And I'm going to add to this quickly, uh, in my own family, not only are we Native American, but in my own family, we have members of our family who are mixed race, who are, uh, Black, who are Hawaiian, who are, um, um, from, uh, South Asia. We also have, um, LGBTQ members in my own family. I have transgender people in my family. I have a huge body of people who are, uh, of various faiths. And every single one of them has the right to feel welcome, to feel embraced, and to feel included in my community. And that's what I have to say. We must keep this social equity committee alive and at the forefront of leadership in our community. If you, as a city council, walk away from this, then you are saying that you don't think it's important. And, you know, I'm just going to point out to you that I know you all, and I care about the work that you do, and I insist from my heart, the deepest place in my heart, that you continue this work and you keep it in the forefront of the community so that we all learn that this is where we need to go. Just as so many people have said tonight, this has to do about feeling included, a feeling that you belong and you are not separated. and you are not separated from anybody or anything in this community. That's it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, yes.
I think Marla was just trying.
Yeah, Marla Spell. I know you've been trying to figure out how to raise your hand. I could see you there. We're going to go ahead and ask you, excuse me.
That's why, folks, in all that chaos, I was going to read a letter to you from the Martin Luther King Committee. I'm a new member on that committee and they just wanted to show their strong support and applaud you for sensing the value and the necessity for this kind of attention. And they believe strongly that it should be part of the City Council. And there have been other things tried in the past where it's a community organization and it just doesn't have the synergy and the standing to make the kind of progress that's needed on these tough issues. And so they said, please don't do that. They applaud you for having taken this action. It's important and they fully support you. And as you know, they've been leading the charge in terms of getting attention for the last 35 years on these issues and it's even more important now than ever before. So there's a copy that was sent to the Equity Committee. And if you want to see what they officially said in their language, I can send you another copy. But we make an impassioned plea. This is too important just to put it under the rug again. Too many people are counting. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, I do not see any other public comment.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council. For further discussion and/or questions. Thank you to the public for everyone that spoke.
Well, I'm prepared to go ahead and make the motion on the value statement to get that out of the way.
Okay.
So I move to approve the three additions to the city's value statement that were printed in our, on our agenda packet as they are.
I will second that. Okay, motion by Councilmember Garavenna, seconded by Mayor Protim Plummer. Any more further discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Aye.
And Councilmember Setch?
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero for that part. Okay. And then we have part of the discussion and possible action of moving the Social Equity Committee to a community-owned committee. Who would like to start? This is probably where it gets somewhat uncomfortable, so I just would like to remind the public that the public portion, public comment portion has passed. Councilmember Garavenna.
Okay, so in my view, I think it's premature to be on our agenda. I think what we need to be doing is letting the Social Committee finish the charges that it was given from the outset. And we haven't done that. So I think in that sense, I think it's premature. Where, once we get to the point to where those objectives are completed is the time to discuss future options, I think. I have a view. A lot of people have different views. My, my view is that I think despite what a lot of the testimony, I think that it's better in a more, a larger group that has county involvement, county government involvement. And frankly, of all, to all the people here that spoke tonight. They should know that it's fallen on pretty much deaf ears over at the county. And I think that the best thing to do from your perspective is to petition your county government figures to get involved in some way. And the earliest and best way to do that is tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM at there's board supervisors meeting during open communication. I think some of us, I know I've talked to a couple of people over there and I think some of the other members of the council, certainly members of the committee have, I think have reached out over there and it's. Certainly not on the front burner with some and we're hearing even more reject, well, rejection is not quite the word I was going to say, but it's kind of that way with with some people over there. So I think, I think the way for this to be successful in the long run is to get both city and county support. And that's why I've always believed that we need to take care of the city part of it for our city. And then join a larger group, join a larger group, not push it off, but join a larger group that deals with it both city and county-wide in our region. More of a supergroup than 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 momentum-less group. And I can understand why where people say lacked momentum. I was part of a group that tried to start the human, Twomey County Human Relations Alliance along with Mercedes and some others. And that kind of fizzled for a various amount of reasons. One of which it wasn't tied to really any kind of other agency that like, like a larger agency, like an ATCA, for example, that kind of agency or a government agency. So. That's where I'm kind of at and have kind of always been at. We need to take care of what we're, what are, what only affects the city for us. And then my feeling is that we need to join into a larger group that deals with it as as an issue, both in the city and the county and the region. And I think there's better opportunity for more. Involvement from the public, you know, as we've talked about the workshop and the Brown Act and this and that. There's a lot of restrictions that we have to fall under as a governmental agency that when it's not tied to a governmental agency is run by something that's not a governmental agency, but is participated in by a governmental agency. Has better participation, can do more things. I think you need to get people together and do that. That's my opinion. But again, like I said, I think it's premature to even think about stopping now. We have to finish what we're doing, what we've been charged to do.
So I do want to be fair to our supervisors because you hit on something. They've been very busy.
Without a doubt, but this is important too.
Oh, absolutely. What I'm saying is they've been very busy trying to dig the county out of many of the problems that has been caused in the last 10 years by prior supervisors that are no longer in office. And I, I really got to be fair to the supervisors, you know, on that, but I absolutely agree. This is absolutely important, so. That's my two cents for right now. Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Well, I'm very proud of the city of Sonora for being a standard bearer and on the platform of social equity. I lived for 40 years in a very racially diverse environment. And I, you know, it's just, it's painful to think that, that the world is coming here. And, you know, accept it. This is, this is something that we need, we need to stand by and support. And I am, you know, I endorse the city's. Jurisdiction on this committee.
Councilmember Setch?
May I ask Jim a question?
Sure, we're discussing this.
I'm confused, Jim. When you say that you want the city to, the city to join the county, but that, but not as a Brown Act governed.
Well, if you, if you have a single member of each jurisdiction, like a JPA, then you wouldn't have to deal with Brown Act issues. Once you get to two, isn't that correct?
I just wasn't sure what you were suggesting. Okay.
And there's backgrounds of the staff that could be involved as well. So isn't that correct, counselor? That if one member of each jurisdiction that you're not, I'm trying to stretch out here to figure out how to open that.
So it wouldn't be able to be a JPA because we'd be governed by the Brown Act. So it would be a community-based organization similar to the chamber where there would be representatives that would be appointed to serve on that committee. And that would exempt them from some of the Brown Act and noticing requirements and things of that and Form 700, you know, requirements and things like that.
It just seems like we live our whole lives governed by the Brown Act and we seem to do it pretty easily. I don't know why that would be a. Really even an issue for this, but I just want to read something and. You know, this conversation about race and equity are not, are not easy. Racial justice never has been. I don't believe anyone ever thought it would be easy. These are difficult conversations. This is an unusual group, opinions very widely and as I argue that they should. We've written a purpose statement, mission and vision statements. We've added three lines of text to the city's value statements. We have hosted a workshop. I believe we spent three sessions on the purpose statement alone. Again, these conversations are not easy and this work is not fast. I believe the work of the resolution that we have just begun will be the most difficult conversation yet. I, as one person writing a resolution, had nine drafts of a resolution I wrote. And though I received some help along the way, I really only had to satisfy myself and portray my personal point of view. I do think there's been movement, not just objectives checked off, checked off as complete, but a deepening in understanding of committee members and a shared goal, not always on the same page, but always the majority. And we have barely begun the work of the resolution. I guess I want to say most of all that because this is hard, it's not mean we shouldn't move forward. I know there's trepidat- trepidation and fear. I know there's a perceived need to tiptoe around certain issues and certain people. I know that people think this conversation is divisive, but the goal truly is to heal, truly heal in a way that serves everyone, not a perceived fantasy of how things have always been and a belief that that's where they should stay, but an understanding of things taking place behind our backs and sometimes in plain sight. This work isn't linear but circular and we often find ourselves circling back to a topic already discussed, hence the timeline. As in any kind of hard and often very personal work, there's a peeling of the onion and deeper layers are discovered. The more that's uncovered, the more we may find to do. And sometimes we're surprised we're having that discussion again. But again, it's the nature of the work. This is also courageous work and I include not just the folks on the committee, but staff, but staff and the council. The city should hold its head high, not as a thorn in the side, but a feather in one's cap. The city gives this work an important voice that others haven't found. The platform gives it a certain priority and status even with our failures. There are four groups who would love to collaborate with us, but, but only as an entity of the city. To learn how to recognize implicit bias in ourselves and identify it in our institutions, not to place blame, not, but to recognize a shared blindness, try to understand its painful effects and start the long process of healing the community. There are problems. People of color passed over or ignored in businesses, people physically harmed, kids treated badly in schools or buses by other kids, fear on our streets that people who look like me never feel and rarely see. We are not charged with healing all these wounds. The city's most effective as part of the healing, but the city is most effective as the part of the healing process. And neither will, are we free to abandon it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to take the floor for a second then. The city, the city charged this committee with writing a resolution and we're coming close to a year. I. I was going to move to move it aside, but I respect Jim's opinion so much that I would just ask the committee at this point to really work to write their resolution. And then we can talk about where it goes forward while Jim's still here and on the committee. I think he is 11th in. Agent and adds enormously to the work that you do. Frankly, otherwise. Well, there are many, many good people on the committee and many good people who are very interested in this. But as a partisan myself, when I see the makeup of almost everybody commenting on this, they almost all look like very eager partisans. And I personally am unable to separate what is, what appears to be a partisan position to strengthen party from just good human nature. The one person that I do see always trying to do something and redirect it to work for the community is Darren, who is often graceless, as I myself often am. But he is trying to bring it back to our disadvantaged people in the county and homeless. You started with trying to help the homeless. As far as I know, we have even more now. We need to be doing something about problems where the city has something more than feel-good rhetoric to offer. And that's really in our purview. So I, I would. Well, I would move that the city write the, that the committee write the resolution for July.
Committee's doing that. That just started at the last meeting.
Good. I would also ask that we can see the workshop. I, I watched the last meeting and you discussed the workshop, but. I went to.
Yeah, staff apologizes for that. They will be putting it on the website as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will yield the floor to the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. I, you know. You know, I could see it all different ways. Jim, I have to agree with you like 110% because I think it needs to be bigger. And that's why I personally don't believe it should be under the city's jurisdiction. But I think right now is the wrong time to do anything differently. So I think we should continue with that. There's some people in this group that I highly respect, especially after getting to know them. Nikki Coleman is definitely one of them, learning her story, getting to know her story. Whatever the future is for this group, I hope that she is really in that future. She's a very peaceful person. She's not passive. People get that confused. She's a very peaceful person that you can basically talk about anything with an openly disagree and she still makes you feel welcome. So I really, I hope that she has a future in this if something changes. So. My personal opinion is right now is that we just stay the course, get this written, and then we take a look at other options in the future. Whatever happens with the. Now, again, it's not even on the agenda. It's not even the future yet. So I would like to see. Something written and Collette, you had your hand raised, so I wanted to know.
I didn't mean to end, finish your thought.
Okay. And again, these are my thoughts, you know, and I will say this with this particular group, the people who should be participating because they have problems with bigotry, whether it's, and this is going to make some people mad, whether it's bigotry towards racism, bigotry towards politics. The people that have the problem aren't the ones that are, the ones that are participating don't have the issues with the bigotry, at least the ones I know of personally. So that's one of the things is that I would like to see is outreach because there are people out there that have problems, that really have issues with racism and you try to address it with them and it doesn't go well. I know this from having to defend family members in the past, so. I guess what I'm trying to say is we've got a good group. I would like to know eventually how we're going to have some sort of outreach. Because, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot by any means, but the people who should be participating in this are not participating.
Are you talking to the, which people who are you?
I'm talking about the racists, the bigots, the people that are purposely discriminatory. The people that, there were one gentleman that was on here that had the issue in the bar. You know, the people that did that to him aren't participating in this group.
Well, I think that that's a personal choice.
It, that's what I'm saying though, is that, you know, what, what kind of outreach will we be looking at? Because that's very important and I'm, and I'm not putting you on the spot, but it's something to think about.
There, I mean, there certainly, that certainly is a confrontation that is happening. That certainly is a conversation is happening. I just want to bring it also to everyone's attention that we have more than just a, a resolution to do. I mean, we were charged with certain things and we, and we have other things besides just a resolution. So don't, you know, the resolution, I would hope that that wouldn't be the end of this. We have other, other objectives.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
By that, that homelessness and social equity were, are two separate issues.
And there's a homeless, there's a whole, you know, large group addressing homelessness. I mean, that's not this, this group's preview.
But at any rate.
Bipartisan group addressing homelessness.
Mayor Protam Plummer, you need to speak into the mic.
Yeah, my apologies.
Okay. So any other council members?
So no action is needed? If I mean, based off of what I've heard, there'd be no motion that would be required?
Okay, so just for the public's knowledge, we did approve the Social Equity Committee additions to the city value statement. And that did pass as a five to O vote. Okay, so if there's no more for the council, then we will move on to item number nine, which is consideration to adopt the City of Sonora Strategic Plan.
Mr. Mayor, council member, the item before you is to adopt the 2021 City of Sonora Strategic Plan. This item actually comes as somewhat your third workshop item. If you recall, we met twice in February to discuss the City of Sonora's goals and objectives. And we discussed at the time that staff would be bringing forth a strategic plan to identify action items to address those goals and objectives in order to implement those goals that the council had established. So I'm going to go ahead and just do a brief presentation for the members of the public, and your strategic plan is attached along with your agenda item. It is there. The PowerPoint is there, but the the actual strategic plan is with along with the agenda. So I hope everybody in the audience can see what I am sharing at this moment. Again, the 2021 Goal Setting and Strategic Plan, the council met on February 8th and February 15th, 2021, or excuse me, I'm sorry, February 8th and February 22nd. I apologize for that, to discuss and finalize the 2021 Goals and Objectives. The City Council established five goals, and for each goal, we had three objectives set by the council to meet each of those goals. The city administrator, along with the department heads, have developed the 2021 Strategic Plan. So staff has worked jointly together to identify staff-required action items to address each objective, and then ultimately to looking at your holistic goal. The strategic plan, along with your goals and objectives, will be evaluated annually at the annual goal-setting workshop in January generally to monitor progress and completion. And then I know this is kind of hard to see, but this is this document was also put in your packet. It is what each goal and objective that were identified, and I'll just read them. I'll just read the goals briefly. And that's number one, to create a safe and healthy community. Number two, to provide stewardship for our financial resources. Number three, stimulate economic prosperity for our community. Number four, promote our historical and cultural heritage. And number five, to plan for the future of our community enhancement of our quality of life. So as we go forward, what is the strategic plan? A strategic plan states the direction for the community and identifies strategies and action plans to achieve specific goals. Those are measurable actions that staff can accomplish and measure for the council as we move towards your objectives and goals. A strategic plan provides a basis for monitoring progress and assessing results and impacts. And we as staff, the City of Sonora Strategic Plan, uses the city's vision, mission, and value statement. And of course, we're going to include those additional three statements that you just approved, plus the five city council goals and subsequent objectives as its roadmap for action. And what I will say is, this roadmap for action also addresses where staffing resources and financial resources need to be placed, and identifies those priorities for staff. So when we look at a strategic plan, when we look at your objectives, when we look at your goals, that is where your staff focus is going to be. So obviously, your department heads have their day-to-day tasks, but when we look at any other projects outside of the strategic plan, this is where my staff is going to be focused on. So for the remainder of 2021, staff goals, staff working will be on these items identified in the strategic plan outside of their normalized day-to-day work. So just, I'm I'm not going to read everything, but just kind of a couple of highlights. So we, number one goal, obviously, to create safe and healthy community, but we talked about that priority of ensuring and supporting law enforcement and fire department staffing and resources. Your action items developed by staff is to look at implementing a fleet management plan that addresses our aging police fleet. As you recall, we talked about it extensively in the goal setting. We have aging fleet. It has issues with retention, issues with safety. That's an action item, a fleet management plan that your staff is going to be bringing forth to you. We are currently exploring funding opportunities to provide for a third full-time fire engineer position allocation. So we're looking at that with the county, with your fire tax JPA. I know that is something that if and when that fire tax passes by voters, that is something that will provide additional revenue for the City of Sonora to look at a potential full-time, a third fire engineer. And then we also talk about, and then throughout the document, we talk about career and professional growth for our employees. When we look at establishing fire safety protocols that integrate with the county and state preparedness and evacuations, we're actually at staff level already doing that. We are actively participating with TC, TCTC, your Transportation Council, also with Tuolumne County on emergency operation studies and evacuation route studies right now. You, your police chief is actively participating with TCTC and the county to develop those evacuation routes and looking specifically at an emergency operation study. We also, your fire chief is an active participant right now for the newly created Tuolumne County Fire Resiliency Advisory Committee. So we commit to ensuring that we will be participating actively in those committees and have an active voice on that. And then we also, we talked about staff, your fire chief talked about reviewing and possibly updating the current Sonora Municipal Code to address fire preparedness and safety concerns. Are we adequate within our municipal code at this time? And then continue to work with property owners to encourage support vegetation removal for fire safety. And then again, on this last goal, exploring all opportunities to provide best practice and dignified solutions to our growing homeless population and low-income affordable housing needs. Staff is committed to working with our local partners such as Tuolumne County and AdCA, and I think we've come a long way with that. Staff right now has open communications with the county and AdCA on a very consistent basis about the homeless issues that we're seeing within our community. We want to find supportive permanent housing transitional homeless shelter resources and provide more services to mitigate existing homeless camps. And I know that's a hot topic right now, considering the the fires that were initiated in the homeless camps this weekend. We want to address barriers to long-term housing, such as review and modification of the city's transient residential use permit or short-term rental program. The city council has already directed staff to look at that ordinance and bring back recommendations. That will be coming back to the council for a study session on May 3rd and exploring the possibility of using designated city housing program funds to purchase real property to provide an emergency shelter space within the city. And actually, myself and Rochelle Kellogg are actually working on that as we speak, looking at potential blighted properties that we could potentially look at for emergency shelter space. We are talking about this with the county and also AdCA, so we are getting community support on that as well. So number two goal, provide stewardship for our financial resources. Number one, you wanted to create a formal orientation opportunities for newly elected council members. We just talked about this with the planning commissioner appointments. Right now, staff is working with your city attorneys to review and update the city's elected and appointed city officials handbook, your rules and procedures, and we are, Nubie and I are actually working on that as we speak. And then staff and your city administrator is talking about the development of a formal orientation program for your city, and not only you're elected, but you're appointed. So when we talk about your planning commissioners as well, officials that incorporates every department and activity of the city. So every person, every new elected or appointed official has a very thorough knowledge and meeting one-on-one with department heads so they can thoroughly understand the different elements of the city. So we are developing that, and staff is coming up with ideas on that right now. And then obvious, and then also investing your your priority two under this goal, investing in professional development of city staff to ensure best practice and best use of resources. Can't stress this enough, the need to ensure that we are developing our staff to ensure the most efficient manner of taxpayer funds and also to ensure that we are encouraging our staff to be the best employees that they can be. So we are looking right now at updating our annual review process and methodology to ensure that we are conducting performance evaluations properly, but also to ensure employee needs are being met professionally. And then prioritize budget and budget, professional skill development, encourage outside classes and workshop attendance. And I don't know if Stephen Qualls is still on the phone, but the ability to be able to engage in webinars has really helped our small city because we have been able to have a lot more staff participate in outside workshops. So we really appreciate that. And then we are looking at updating the city's travel policy to encourage more professional development and workshop attendance. That travel policy is a bit outdated, and it actually dissuades our employees from seeking outside classes. So we want to make sure that we are encouraging that. And I'm trying to rush through these. I apologize. And if you have questions, please stop me. And then number three under goal number two is prioritizing the use of discretionary funds and creating a city reserve policy. This is crucial. And it is actually under Gadsby and GAAP best practice policies. So we want to develop and adopt a city fund balance reserve policy based on Gadsby and GAAP. Gadsby is your governmental accounting standards board, and GAAP is your general, generally accepted accounting practices, right, Chris? And these are things that we, when we have our single audit from our outside auditor, this is how they they review our finances. They review us from an auditing and can potentially find findings if we are not in alignment with what Gadsby and GAAP dictate. So we want to make sure that all of our our policies are under best practice of those two entities. And then as Chris and I are going to be talking about coming forward in the budget, we need to start addressing our pension liabilities because they do create an unfunded burden amongst city finances. And then also, when we look at our aging infrastructure right now, we need to think about long range and developing and implementing an annual fund, excuse me, a capital improvement plan and annually fund that. So even in downturn economies, we want to make sure that we're putting something towards that capital improvement plan. We don't ever want to get to an exorbitant amount of deferred maintenance. We are seeing that there have been quite a significant amount of deferred maintenance that we're starting to address those now because they're coming to head, and we can't put them off any longer. And so with a capital improvement plan, that will, those will address those going forward and do so on a on a yearly basis. And then number three, stimulate economic prosperity for our community. That priority or objective is evaluate and update the city municipal code and policies to eliminate barriers to commercial and residential development. That action item, number one, number one, and I think I've said this now for the last three budget discussions, is we have to commit to increasing capacity in the community development department. And that is from a from a city administrator's recommendation. An opinion is one of going to be my number one priority going into budget fiscal year 21, 22, and looking at hiring a full-time city planner, and that recommendation will be going forward during the budget process. And then complete implementation of the city's new municipal code electronic system upgrade. That is in full swing right now with your deputy city clerk and also your community development department. And then expand the use of a contract building official inspector. Currently, we have a building inspector only budgeted at two days. It's a contract building inspector. He's only here two days. But there is significant work to be done to expand his contract to three days a week. That will speed up permitting. That will have the ability to commit to eliminating barriers to commercial and residential development. So that will be something that will be brought forth at budget time as well, is a possible expansion of that. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Anne. I'm sorry.
How the the federal funds, backfill funds, you know, with the timing of those and how they would work into this plan.
So because we are, that'll be brought forth at at budget, but because we are a small city, we are not going to be getting a direct allocation. Our allocation depends on the fluctuating through the state. So we had been told it was looking at about 60 to 90 days. We're anticipating hopefully somewhere mid-June, but remember, that's paying back already reserves. And so we want to make sure that we're paying back what we're already dipping into and plugging in any type of revenue loss. And so, yes. So we're looking, that'll be full explanation when we go into budget, where we're looking at as far as revenues are concerned, that revenue backfill coming from your American Rescue Plan Act and so forth. But again, that's for a budget discussion. These are the action items that staff feels, though, that when we're looking at eliminating barriers to development, these these are have-to action items from this perspective. And then, of course, working with the county to revisit and revise the 1991 Revenue Sharing Agreement and looking at annexations. We need to do a thorough analysis of desirability and feasibility of annexation in which areas of the unincorporated area are desirable for the city. So that analysis needs to be done. And then also engaging in continued communication with Tuolumne County leadership. The CIO and myself, Tracy Riggs, we do meet quarterly. We do have pretty constant communication. If not through Tracy, I do have constant communication with her staff. So that that will definitely be, that's a high priority with me of continued communication with Tuolumne County leadership. And then, excuse me, on your last objective or priority is developing a plan and infrastructure that builds partnerships of local agencies and organizations that promote and attracting business growth. So one of the things is kind of hard from a staffing capacity. We do not have an economic developer or director or coordinator on staff. So kind of the things that we feel from a staff perspective that are low-hanging fruit for staff to be able to achieve, hopefully in this calendar year, is looking at the city council developing core values when it comes to the city's guiding principles on matters related to economic development. We want to make sure the city council is leading together on what that development is. And then also a development strategy to the sports, strong recovery following COVID-19, because we all know COVID-19 changed many things. So what does that economic development strategy look like following the pandemic? And then obviously, I just talked about it, but evaluating current staffing and capabilities for the city to identify economic growth. So are we at the staffing capacity to actually lead from an economic development standpoint at this point? Moving on to goal number four, promoting our historical and cultural heritage, define the city's cultural competitive advantage, enhance the cities. So we're already working, I'm already working locally with your Chamber of Commerce. I work locally with the Tourism Bureau. This is something that I feel with those relationships, we need to develop a partnership to divine with those cities' cultural competitive advantage and relying on those partnerships to do that. So that's something that I commit to engage in for this remainder of this calendar year. And then looking at a plan to clean, maintain, and promote the Sonora Creek. Right now, and I I don't know if council members know this, but annually, our Public Works Department coordinates already with CalFire for vegetation and debris removal, and we commit to ensuring that we annually work with CalFire to ensure for that vegetation debris removal of Sonora Creek. And then providing a public review of best practices to ensure climate of equality, equity, and inclusivity for individuals of all races, genders, social identities, in support of our historical and cultural heritage. Now, mind you, these action items, I know we have our social equity committee, but these action items are for staff to be able to implement from a staff level. So what staff feels is that we can accomplish within this calendar year is executing the commitment to support diversity and equity and inclusion in all city hiring and personnel practices. We are looking at conducting a baseline analysis of the city to understand where there can be any action to be more equitable and inclusive, and that's just not from a hiring standpoint. That's in all types of practices within the city. And then obviously, bringing forth, helping the social equity formally adopt a resolution in support of social justice.
Can I add one more before you go? This is also a component that's likely going to be required in federal grants going forward. So you're going to, most, most cities are in the process, I mean, all of our cities were in the process of developing these kind of standards and reviews because it's going to be, you're going to have to be able to demonstrate them to get any kind of federal funds going forward.
And does that include the language, social justice?
No, it just includes the, it includes the components that we were talking about.
I find attractive, and I support everything else, and but this is a pro forma objection to the use of social justice, which is to me pure Marxism. And I think we should not be putting things in those terms, but like I said, it's pro forma. I support everything else and I'm not going to vote against this because of that. But I would like to see us change that type of language going forward. So I could support it.
So your last goal, and I'm really sorry because I know we're all kind of getting a little bit tired here, but is planning for the future of our community and enhancement of quality life. Ensuring a formal adoption of the Greenlee Road extension, extension project. This was actually something that Jerry and I worked on to bring forth tonight. But with all the other items, we felt we would bring it forth going back into your May calendar. So we will be bringing forth a resolution to to formally adopt the Greenlee Road extension as a priority regional improvement for the City of Sonora. And that includes number two, which is advocating both as an elective, your elected representative and your staff, because there are two separate committees on the TCTC. For TCTC to prioritize and fund the Greenlee Road extension, and it also looks at what, how we have to prioritize that with the county as well. So those will be something that we will be discussing in May when we bring that forward. And then your priority five, two, which is find funding and develop a plan for a new city storm drain system. Explore the possibility of rainwater reclamation flood control project. These are very expensive projects. So for for us to start getting the groundwork going, we have to understand that the council has to prioritize funding through budget allocation to hire a consultant to explore a plan for a new storm drain system. When we look at a whole new storm drain system, you're you're talking like 30 to 40 million dollars. And so we need to look at what that entails, you know, do we need a full, you know, that's, we need a consultant to even gauge what that even looks like. So when we talk about that, we we have to look at first thinking how a consultant would come in to even analyze that. But that would require that the council would prioritize. But that would require that the council would prioritize that funding for that consultant. Yes, sir.
So does that mean, are we talking about the entire city? Are we talking about the major downtown area?
I don't know, I'm not an engineer. So I need a consultant to come in and do that analysis for me.
Gotcha, okay.
Did you have a question, Mayor Prota? And then working with ERMWA, which is your integrated regional water management, to explore funding for a rainwater reclamation control project. I know council member such had talked about possible grants for that. So that's something I want to start looking at from a council, or excuse me, from a staff perspective. And then priority five three, establish and develop a city of Sonora Climate Action Plan. If you look at what the county is doing at the moment, they actually have a consultant that is going through the whole climate action plan process. That includes community engagement, workshops and so forth. And so again, that, to even explore that, we need to look at prioritizing funding through budget allocation to hire a consultant to explore a climate action plan consistent with the city's general plan. Now, when I, hold on just a second, Councilmember Garaventa. When I say prioritize funding, you know, that's going to come up at budget. So we don't have a lot of funding to fund all of these projects. So it's going to be up to the council to determine where those priority fundings are going to be and when we're looking at these major projects. Yes, sir.
So the question I had is, is there any possibility of joining the county? Or is that to save money and save time? Or is usually it's best just to be separate?
I think we need to definitely look at what the county is doing and be able to work off of what they're establishing. But they're already going full blazes with their plan. So it's kind of too late to be able to join forces at this point. But we definitely want to integrate with theirs.
We're going to have to rely on our own numbers for purposes of meeting our environmental requirements when we process development within the city boundaries, so.
Yeah. So and just for the council and the community's sake is, you know, strategic plans are a process that involves not only the city council and staff, but really the community as well. And so it's a planning and implementation and a review process. Like I said, this strategic plan will be reviewed annually to see where we are, where metrics are, how we're doing. This is a lot of work for staff. So we want to make sure that beyond your day-to-day tasks for your departments, these are the priorities that your staff is going to be working on to ensure that we are meeting the council set objectives and goals. And at this time, I will entertain any questions. Oh, and one final thought, we did add guiding principles to our action items along with a performance management plan in there for the council's review.
Councilmember such?
I don't have a question, I just would really recommend that people sign on to the county's climate action workshops. There are really, there are a lot of really smart people on those workshops. And I've participated in two, there have only been two, right? They're just, they're really extraordinary. And it just is helpful to kind of get a sense of, to even know what the question is.
They've been videotaped, haven't they? Are they online?
They're probably, yeah, they are taped. I don't know.
On this county website somewhere.
Have they, they've had three of them so far?
Two.
Two, I think.
And how long do they usually last?
The next one's in May.
An hour or two?
Maybe an hour and a half, I think.
Six to seven thirty.
Okay, thank you, because I would like to, I haven't been able to attend any of them.
And a really broad representation from the community. Sorry, thanks.
Mary Rose, I have one question. And it's just my pin-headed editorial background. But why do we only have one competitive advantage for our city's cultural competitive advantage? Do we have, we only have one?
That was the only one that staff could identify at this point. So to be able to understand what that means, I need to be able to work with our partners to look at what that is. So to staff to get a better understanding of what cultural competitiveness is, we only identified that one goal, that one action item.
I'll just wait for the S. When we have more than one.
Any other council members? I know we're all getting tired.
Well, I think in the absence of anything else intelligent to say, I would really like to applaud staff for what is obviously a great deal of work. And it takes a lot of time and energy just to think through these issues and how they will be implemented. And I would like to thank you for that.
Yes, congratulations.
And that's all staff, I mean, this was obviously across the entire spectrum of our staff. And they're doing good work there.
Thank you.
Yeah, ditto.
Okay, so, did we need to approve this or?
Probably, probably. Let me stop sharing.
Sorry, I'm getting that tired. So consideration to adopt the City of Sonora 2021 Strategic Plan. We will turn it over to public comment. Is there any public comment on this?
If you have any public comment for this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or star nine if you're on a phone line. And at this time, Mr. Mayor, I do not see any public comments.
Okay, well, I'm very thankful, very.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mercedes, you raised your hand. I.
Oh, she did, I didn't see that. I apologize, Mercedes.
No, no worries, thank you. I just want to say what a beautiful strategic plan. It is great and shows a lot of the progressive movement of the city according with the times. So thank you so much, city staff and city council for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mercedes. Okay, so bringing it back to the council.
I will move to adopt the City of Sonora 2021 Strategic Plan, second as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Garaventa, second by Mayor Proten Plummer. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Segersstrom?
Aye.
And Councilmember such?
Aye.
Has this five to zero? Okay, so we have our monthly reports. I won't read out every line of those, but we have those. And then our council member and department head reports. So I will go to Chief Vanderweil.
How's it going, Anne, Mayor? Thank you.
Thank you. Chief New.
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Our Community Development Director. Rochelle Kellogg.
The only thing I have, and really, Hazy are a part of this. Also is that Hazy Bulldogs ready to move forward with opening tomorrow with their current location to do their recreational cannabis. So with insurance, either sat without doing their inspections to make sure that they comply with all the use permit requirements. And for those of you that haven't looked at the conditions for a use permit on our cannabis recreational cannabis, there's a lot on there. And so they are ready and they'll be starting operations tomorrow, it sounds like. The, as you know, Wilco opened and the lines are immense. So, but that should be.
A good addition to the city as well. So we do see, you know, we're all very busy, so there's a lot of activity going on, so, thank you.
Yeah, Rochelle, I see a lot of activities, this is the fullest I've seen of the report with different kinds of permits and stuff that I've seen in quite a while.
And I'm sorry, I don't know if her mic was on during that whole entire time, but just for the update of the public, Rochelle Kellogg reported out that Hazy Bulldog had met all the condition requirements to open up recreational cannabis starting tomorrow. And we had the opening of Wilco last week.
Okay, Finance Director, Chris Gorski. Thank you. Our City Attorney.
Nothing tonight, other than it's nice to be back after over a year.
I was, I thought you were going to say I'll be back.
We'll be back.
Our City Administrator.
Nothing else to report, sir.
Okay, so on to council members, Councilmember Garaventa.
I was just looking through my calendar here. I did attend a, I know I did attend a, well, we had a solid waste committee meeting and we also had a, Visitors Bureau had the, their marketing meeting, which I had to drop out of, but Anne was also there. And, see, I think we are, oh, and we are a TCTC meeting as well. So that's about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Segersstrom.
I attended the Yes Partnership, which was fairly uneventful this particular time. And then the next day, I sat in on the act of board meeting as I'm the alternate and they wanted me to kind of get up to speed with what was happening on the act of board. And Collette can tell you that. I also attended the Adventist Health Blue Zone Healthy Community Presentation, which, you know, apparently we're all going to be healthier and live longer if we follow these precepts. And it was really interesting though about how important community is. And that, that community really does sustain people and encourage longevity as well as, you know, a healthy diet and all the other things. But the importance of interconnectivity. Then the Tuolumne County Visitors Update, they have an app that's going to be incredible for booking activities in Tuolumne County. I don't know, I don't know when it goes active, but they are, they're got some ambitious activities going. And then just a reminder, this Friday, or this Friday, this Saturday is the prescription takeback up at the Tuolumne County Library. And also it's the Love Tuolumne County Volunteer Day or Weekend, I think. I know, I'm cleaning off graffiti on Saturday and maybe Sunday, for all I know. And then the Energy Action Committee is going to be meeting with the county, with Quincy Yaley, to see, you know, if there is synergy between the city and the county for climate action plans. So, and that is it, thank you.
I think.
It's a, it's a, it's sort of this overall healthy community plan. And I believe that you can go on to the Adventist website and learn more about it. But I think there's like nine different components. Your diet, your faith, your, but, you know, your community and activity and all these things that integrate into, the Blue Zone is an area, and they've identified them around the world, where there is a high percentage of citizens over 100. So it's kind of this, you know, longevity plan.
You mean they'll never get rid of us?
Well, yeah, well, I don't know, they have targeted Sonora as a Blue Zone potential area. So we will all see, maybe we will still be here in 25 years.
Well, we have great food opportunity, a good sense of community and clean air.
Councilmember such?
So on the 8th, I attended the Climate Action Plan Workshop. Again, really strongly recommend that, it's really interesting and interactive and you break out in little groups and it's really people, every segment of the community is well represented. I also attended AdCA's Board of Directors meeting on the 9th. The nice thing that's happening with AdCA, although it doesn't affect Sonora, is that they've purchased a shelter, a home for shelter in Jackson. And they are just in the process, I think it's in escrow still, but that's exciting. And then I attended the League of Cities California Mayor's Coalition. I felt like an imposter because I'm not a mayor, but, but it was actually really interesting. And really, the real reason I attended is because Alex Padilla was speaking and I wanted to listen to him. On the 12th, we had a social equity committee meeting and I then went to the Wilco grand opening afterwards. I was a little bit late, but really well attended and I haven't been back, but it's an impressive looking store if you haven't been there yet. On the 13th, I went down to the park, Courthouse Square, Courthouse Park for the firewise community. And I connected with Julie Johnston, who is a, has created a firewise community in her community. And I spoke to Anne and Julie's coming to my house sometime this week to talk about how to do it on Myers Hill, how we might be able to set that up. So that's kind of, it's kind of exciting and a little overwhelming. TCTC I attended, but my tree broke in half and I lost my power. So I had to sign off for a little while because I didn't, it occurred to me that I could just call in after I lost power and internet access. So it was sort of dramatic, this big kaboom in the middle of that meeting. I also attended the, on the 15th, the first of the new homeless advisory committee meeting that Mary Rose and I both sat on. And I think it's a really good group, I actually feel hopeful, you know, homelessness is really hard. It's hard and it is so multifaceted. But I think, I think it's the best group that's been convened for this so far, I think. And then this Saturday with the Love Tuolumne County, I was going to work, volunteer for the Resiliency Village at their, the new piece of property they just bought to see if, help them get that started, because that will be a huge relief for, for, you know, for some people, for some home, unsheltered people. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope I won't be stealing any of your thunder. But at the Wilco opening, they mentioned that for police dogs in small communities like ours, that they will donate all of the food. And I approached them, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name, the manager.
Oh, Marcus Rodriguez.
Marcus, right, who committed to doing so. So our dog will be fed irrespective of anything else that we can come up with. But that's good news. Anyway, nothing further, thank you.
I got to speak at the Wilco's grand opening and that was a lot of fun. It lasted 45 seconds and my wife told me if I talked any longer, she was going to act like she was hitting a zapper because I guess I like to tell stories. So it was great. Again, Marcus Rodriguez is running that store and I've worked for him before. He's tough, but he will, he will keep that store clean. He will make it a shining example of our community. So with that said, we're adjourning at 8:08 PM.